Commissioner Roach.
Here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here, we do have a quorum present. We have a special meeting that was called for 4:45. And there's all some other kind of stuff you have to do.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would just ask, normally you have a motion to approve an agenda and never have I really wanted to do that until tonight, but you know, these items just recently got added to the agenda and my question is, are some of these items, and the manager's not here, will some of these items wait until the consent agenda on the 16th?
Um...
Specifically excluding the Human Rights Commission and the Buffalo Trace items? Could they possibly wait till the 16th? Because I have questions about item six that I would like discussed, and 15 minutes is not going to do it.
What we can do, if we need more time, we can recess the 4:15 meeting, correct it for a while. And then we can call to order the regular special meeting.
The work session.
Work session. And then we can go back, I think in conclusion of the work session, back into the special meeting if you all would like to do that.
Well, I think we have...
How many people are here?
We have the county here and we have, I think Buffalo Trace people here. So, I'm asking, is it possible to take those other items, excluding those two, and move them to the consent agenda?
That's okay.
For the 16th?
Um...
My question is, we have six items on this meeting for 15 minutes, and we have the county here and we have Buffalo Trace here, and 15 minutes doesn't do justice. And I have questions about one of the items. So my question is, the items excluding number two and number five, is it possible to move them to the consent calendar for the 16th? Is there some emergency deadline that has to happen before the 16th?
Tim, when you're done, if I could address that really?
Go ahead.
Okay. Since items four and six are related to the bonds which are going to be sold tomorrow at 1 o'clock, my recommendation would be against delaying action on...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My items that I was asking about moving were item number three, yes, item four, you're right, item six. So you think we have to move on those tonight?
That would be my recommendation. And those documents are fairly standard documents that we have approved. I know that the engagement agreement is a document that we've approved in the past when we've engaged Tulking and Ogden to service debt bond council for the city.
Okay.
And I apologize, I don't specifically recall whether we've entered into an agreement with Bank of New York Mellon before, but you do need to have that bank involved in the issuance of the sewer bonds.
Well, Mayor, then I would make the motion that we open this vote meeting, deal with item two, and that we deal with items three, four, and six, and that we adjourn, or we recess and go into the 5 o'clock meeting, and recess that to come back and deal with the item that includes Buffalo Trace and the county, so that they don't have to sit here through the entire meeting.
Do you make it?
And that is my motion.
Okay. It's a motion by Commissioner Bowers to pass over from this meeting the items that she just mentioned, which would be two, three...
Four and six. Now, I make, my motion is that we...
Two, three, four, and six. My attempt to focus.
My motion is that we deal with item two, and that we then recess and go into the regular work session, call that to order, recess that, and come back to this agenda, so that we can take care of this business and have all these people in the room and let them go home and then go back into the regular work session.
It's a motion by Commissioner Bowers. Give us a second.
Can I, if I can ask to clarify, would you include items two and five right now in the discussion right now because...
No, I want to...
The interlocal agreement is Buffalo Trace and Buffalo Trace.
Yes, what my motion is, is that we take item two, and that we take item three, and that we take item four, and that we take item six, and we deal with those, and that we recess to go into the 5 o'clock meeting, and then we recess that to come back in and deal with item five, which I have some discussion points on, questions. And it may take a while, we've got people here. So basically, we deal with everything except...
Number five.
Item five.
Okay. Thank you, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
It's always good to slow down and get the right motion. So the motion is made by Commissioner Bowers, and I need a second, if there is a second.
Evidently, Mayor, people have discussed this outside of the meeting and they have no questions. I know that the final copy just got done today, so I got down here and didn't see anybody here early but myself, so has everyone seen that final copy that just got out today?
Let me do this, let me get this for discussion. I'll second it, so we just go to put it on the table for discussion, so I make it cleaner. Okay. So a second. Now the motion is, and now we can now go ahead and discuss.
My reason for doing that is, I think that you've got six items on this agenda to be done in 15 minutes, one of which is very, they're all important, but one of which we spent hours on, to point, and I think that to come in here and give a minute and a half to an item doesn't do any of the items justice, and I think it's a farce. And I think that these people that have come to hear about this item, Buffalo Trace and the county deserve more than a minute and a half. And I can tell you, I've got questions that will take up twice that long. And we didn't get the final draft of this until today, so I just came down an hour early to get that draft, and I think this is being rushed through.
I'll just jump in, in the interest of harmony, I'll go ahead and go along with it as well. That'd give us three, we'll deal with those others, come back and deal with the other one after we recess. It'd still be the same difference, we'll just be going past five if we do it from here on out. We're going to stop at five and recess anyway and have to come back.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's six, the one and a half dozen of another. I would point out that the change that was made to the document was, before it was to be signed by the Franklin County clerk, now it's just signed by the fiscal court clerk. So that was the only change that was made.
My motion is in the interest of saving the people in the room from having to sit through all of the other stuff that they're probably not really interested in. I believe they're here about their one issue, and then if they want to stay, I certainly hope they do, but I don't think that we should make them sit through everything if indeed they need to get out of here, because they think this is going to be done at 5 o'clock, and I don't think it will be.
Okay. Does the mouse have any question before we vote? Or comments? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote. Clerk, please go ahead.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
So you just took up 10 minutes of our time, yes?
All right.
Yes. Okay, that motion is adopted. Okay, first item then we'll do quickly would be the first reading on an ordinance amending chapter 16, section 96.12, an act of 15th fact of ordinances. You can give us a, well, title and summary only, and we'll call it this first reading.
Yes, sir. By title, an ordinance amending chapter 96, sections 96.12 and 96.15 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. Summary, this ordinance amends section 96.12 and section 96.15 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to correct a typographical error and to provide that the mayor is to appoint the members of the Human Rights Commission, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners.
First reading. Second item is number three, to authorize approval of advance advisory agreement between Raymond James and Associates and City of Frankfurt. This would deal with 40,000 dollars paid as national advisor from the 2013 sewer revenue bond proceeds, so would entertain a motion on this item. This would be...
A move approval.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? Say nothing, clerk, please go ahead.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, item's approved. Next item, number four, is to authorize agreement with Tulking and Ogden to serve as bond council in a future of the sewer revenue bond, and we're borrowing up to $9,995,000 for need of sanitary sewer improvements, and these services are necessary in order to move forward, so entertain a motion on this item.
Move it out.
Move by Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roach. Any discussion? Say nothing, please. Clerk, please go ahead.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, item's approved. Next item is number six, and that's authorized agreement with Bank of New York Mellon relating to the issuance of the sewer bonds, and would entertain a motion on this.
Move approval.
Move by Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hayden. No further discussion. Clerk, please go ahead.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, item's approved. So now, next one would be if you want to take a recess from these, the 4:45 meeting, since it is 4:55, where you can use five minutes of the 4:45 meeting and then take a recess right at 5.
Well, I'll tell you what. I have a special screen. Buffalo Trace, BB.
We don't have those numbers.
We're going to know. But we can have BB. There you go. Do you need a motion to recess, Mayor? I think that was in my original motion.
The question was, do you want to use these five minutes or just wanting, like, let the recess be immediate? Because I guess technically...
We can't start till 5. Mayor, before we recess, there is a motion, there is a motion that we want to make, or a suggestion, it's not only agenda, suggestion that we add something to the 16th agenda? Can I do that now?
No, because it's a special.
Would that be in the work session? I can do that in the work session, yes.
Even though, yes.
Yes?
No.
Yeah. It's a regular work session.
No, it's a special meeting.
No, it's a special meeting. It's a work session, you can add that.
No, I'm saying like the work session is regular. I was saying you could add the work session.
I can add it.
No, still...
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting.
Not the work session.
Not the work session.
That's the regular.
At 5.
We threw a bunch of stuff at you.
It's still a special call.
Not the work session, isn't it, no.
That's fine. You could have let that lady talk, yeah. Yeah.
She's still at the reception. She was first coming back this morning. Mayor, since the 16th is a special meeting as well, are we going to have citizen comment?
We've put citizen comments on the agenda, but we're seeing that we're going to do those items on the agenda.
Right.
I have a great thing about it. It'll be on the 23rd.
Okay.
So, let me go back, that motion that Commissioner Bowers, I'd like to read that to the clerk, that's what I do.
The motion was made to consider items two, three, four, and six, and then recess to the work session, and then immediately recess again to come back and deal with item number five.
The reason I was asking, because there wasn't like an actual specific time, just recess sort of, just waiting.
Just whittling your thumbs.
Whittling thumbs. Patience is a virtue.
It's community.
If you can entertain us.
I'll wait till 5.
Because right now we're just...
I'd wait two minutes, bud. I'm going to check my box. I thought I got everything out of it, but...
Look, I'm going to... Oh, it's there.
That's scary. Is he here?
Oh, it's good to see you. Good to see you.
They're done in like two minutes.
I think so.
Two minutes.
How you doing, Fred?
Good to see you.
Oh, I need to help.
Can you help?
Hmm?
Glad you can.
We're almost, I mean, we've got one in.
I was going to say it's... And I would like to call the work session on December 9 to order.
I think you're rarer, less here than I. Are we in the middle? Are we in the middle? You're going to talk to me that way?
I'm going to have to... Just kidding, just kidding. Go ahead.
Commissioner Roach.
Roach already nominated me for that.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here, we have a quorum, and first item of business is citizen comments. Should be for any agenda items that anyone wants to address.
Not for any item, this is not special.
It's not special.
Sorry.
For any item, this is not a special meeting.
Anything, did anybody come to address a special meeting? Or any other item?
Mayor, I think...
I mean, everybody here just called a special meeting.
Yeah, I think my motion was to go back, my motion actually was to come straight out of this and go back and finish the business.
So, I need a motion...
I make a motion, we adjourn?
No, just recess.
Recess.
Second.
Okay. We'll make a motion to recess, and it's made by Commissioner Roach, seconded by Commissioner Haynes, and that motion does not have a time certain, it just would be when, at the call of the chair. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Clerk, please go ahead.
Commissioner Roach.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes. Okay, now recess. Now, we are going to open, reopen the special meeting, and the item that we have for us, item number five, is to consider interlocal agreement between the city and county regarding Buffalo Trace. Thought it was correct. Would open up for any commissioners, if you have any comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Bowers.
And I guess it's for the city, Gary, and the county. I have a couple of issues with number four, and I guess they're questions, and they are, I guess, concerns. 25 years might sound like a long time, but it's really not, and my first que... Let me go back to my first question. My first question is, I don't see anything here that addresses building codes or... So question number one is, is it possible, Mr. Moore, that in this agreement could be added something that anything to do with building codes is actually mutually agreed upon between the county and the city, because I think the way this reads it probably just falls under the county right now?
The way it's currently drafted, Commissioner, is that if the property is deannexed back to the county, then the county is the jurisdictional authority to handle those type issues.
I know that's the way it reads now, and my concern is that I don't want it to be that way. It's right in the middle of the city, in fact, the whole outfit should be in the city, but it's not, and we're not going to change that, but is it possible that whatever is done in terms of building could be mutually agreed upon by the city and the county, and could that be drafted into this? Would the county be willing to do that, and would we be willing to do that?
The statute with respect to annexation specifically authorizes you to do that when you annex property into the city, but the statute is silent of that, and then that when you deannex property, so...
Being that it's silent, we have the option to do what we want, is that correct?
What I was going to say is that since the statute specifically authorizes it in the case of annexation, but does not authorize it in the case of deannexation, then someone can make an argument that since the statute does not specifically authorize that, you do not have the authority to do that.
Or someone could make the argument that it's up to you. Am I right on that?
Not based on that fact, I mean, but you could argue that you could do it, but I have not seen any case law addressing that issue, so we'd be moving into uncharted territory.
We've got Buffalo Trace people here, we've got the county here, and we've got the city here, so could we have that conversation with all three parties right now? If everybody's in agreement, who's going to contest it? Maybe everybody's not in agreement. So, but if there's anybody that would contest it, then that's fine, maybe we don't want to continue the conversation, but I would like to see, you know, there be some agreement between the two parties, the three parties, as to what's going to happen down there in terms of codes.
Commissioner Roach.
No, I think as far as the 25 years, that may be something.
That's my next question.
I understand that, but you know, for the last two or three months, we've been negotiating with the county, coming up with various scenarios, having a lot of give and take, back and forth. This is the culmination of that. So I think it, I think at this point, it's, I think you're almost to the point where you're either for this one, or not for it, or maybe there could be a minor tweak, and I mean minor, but there's been all kinds of back and forth, and it's, and what, and I think it's like most comp, most good compromises, is that neither party is real happy about it.
Right.
So, that's just my perspective.
Does anybody else? Well, my thing with this is, I think that this last leg of this was not done around the table, it was done on the internet, and I have a problem with that. These questions should have been asked and answered in a closed meeting, and so I'm asking them now, and I'm happy to ask them now, because the county and Buffalo Trace are here. But that's my first question, and if nobody has a problem with it being that way, that's fine, but I think one of my first questions was, is what's the building going to look like? It's going to be right in the middle of the city. But my next thing is the 25 years. Mr. Moore, is there any way that this item number four, right now it reads, for a period of 25 years from the date of termination, on an annual basis, an amount equal to the payment that would have been due for the year had the agreement not been... Is there a way that we could change that to say that it would revert back to the city? In other words, if the agreement is terminated, that the property would revert back to the city? I would be more comfortable with that, if that's possible.
Not in the agreement between the city and the county, and the reason I say that is because once the property is deannexed, then in order to annex the property back into the city, you would have to have the request of the individuals that occupy that property or inhabit that property, and of course, that would be Buffalo Trace. So this is an agreement between the city and the county.
Okay.
And of course, this agreement can't direct Buffalo Trace what to do.
So, it can't, there's no way to deannex it specific to these terms? In other words, it can never come back to us? There's no legal way to do that?
I'm not aware...
25 years, what I'm saying is 25 years might seem like a long time, but it's really not, and I think as the city commission, we have to look down the road at the future of this city, and 25 years, folks, is going to go by really quickly.
I'm not aware that you could deannex property, subject to certain terms, that if they changed the property, would automatically revert back to the city. If you want to get an answer on that question, we could file, we might be able to file a declaratory judgment action with the Franklin Circuit Court to request an attorney general's opinion, but there's, to the best of my knowledge, there's no statutory basis for that contingency.
Another question. Is there some reason why this could not have all been discussed? We had a series of closed meetings. Is there some reason these questions cannot be addressed and then come back to the table with answers to those and vote on this? Is there some reason?
Direction was given to staff, Commissioner, to follow through with this, with the county, and...
What was presented back to us, we really should have had those questions answered, all of this should have been addressed.
I asked for a joint meeting. It was given to staff to go forth with the county. This is what we're, this is what we have.
What we're looking at here is not what we...
This is what we've had.
We were to come back to closed meeting to take this up, is what we were to do, and that's not what happened. So I'm asking the questions here that I would have asked in that meeting. So, those are just a couple of little concerns. I can't imagine, I can, yes, actually, I can imagine, you have to wonder if 25 years down the road, is this agreement going to be terminated, and then we lose out from that point onward?
The only thing that that can move, excuse me, commissioners and mayor, is that if the city actually realized that if we were merged government, this would not have taken this long. And in 25 years, that might be a reality for this city, whether you like it or not, that's not what I'm asking, that's not what I'm saying. It might be a reality. It may not.
Merged government is not on the table at this point.
I'm not saying that it is, but you're asking in 25 years...
I don't want to get like the back and forth.
Mayor.
Folks.
Mayor, we have to deal with this as if the city and the county are two different local governments, because that's what they are.
And we are.
We can't speculate about merged government in this situation, and so I regret that I have to ask these questions here. They should have been asked, you know, in a follow-up meeting that I thought we were to have, that we meant to have, so we're here, we're voting on this now, and since we have all the parties in the room...
You can ask questions.
I think that I would like those items discussed among those parties before I make a final vote.
And I don't know, I guess, Mr. Kellerman, are you going to speak for Buffalo Trace if need be, or?
If need be, as you know, Buffalo Trace was not a part of the discussions.
Do you want to, did you want to ask specific question? Commissioner Bowers, did you want to ask the county judge or county staff? They said they'd be happy to discuss.
With the city and the county, it'd be amenable to sitting down with Buffalo Trace and looking at design in terms of anything, so that we can be in agreement on what's actually constructed there to meet both codes? Or is that something we don't want to deal with?
Did I ask for that in an email? Did I not ask for that in an email? And the emails that came back said no. They said that they wanted to direct staff.
I didn't actually participate in an email.
Emails are not, emails are actually, I think, let me just say, I think that what's happening on email is borderline violation of open meetings law. So what I'm trying to deal with here are the issues...
I call for the question.
What is the question?
I call for the vote.
I didn't make a motion.
Okay.
I'm asking...
I make a motion, we approve Buffalo, we approve interlocal agreement.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, is that a motion by Commissioner Roach, Commissioner Hayden? Discussion?
Um, yes. Does anybody besides me think that 25 years is too brief a time period? Or am I the only one that knows that that will pass very quickly?
If I can address that just for a little bit, and that is, what this agreement, this agreement is not for a term of 25 years.
It's if someone...
This agreement...
I know what the agreement says, I've read it, I understand it, but I'm saying, it's saying that if a party determines to terminate, that they will need to pay the amount that we would have collected, that either party would have collected in taxes equal to the 25 years.
For a period of 25, so if you're 15 years out...
So I'm saying that's a brief amount of time.
But if you're 15 years out, and then the agreement is terminated after 15 years...
That's 40 years.
Then you had another 25 to do.
But what I'm saying is that that's the thing I have a bit of a problem with, and really, it's not a huge problem, I just wanted it addressed, I wanted to discuss it, I wanted to make sure everybody understands, including me, that the city could actually stand to lose money, and the county could as well, if the city were to pull out, but...
So, on the, Commissioner, what, on the 25 years, what, do you have a suggestion on what you would rather it be, on that language in number four?[1759.41]
Well, yes, but Mr. Moore just told me that that's not possible.
Okay. Do you have another one?
No.
Okay.
Did you say, did you want to ask? I think the judge said he would be happy to answer.
I hope he wants to.
Well, I would just say that I'm very pleased and proud that staff came over and met with us, and we worked diligently together, had a number of meetings, and came to what we believe would be an agreement that's fair to both parties, and that would move this process forward, and get Buffalo Trace underway on their building expansion, and that I'm pleased with the agreement. Once you, you folks, if you should pass it, it has to go before our body, I only have one vote, I'm hopeful that the majority of the court would support this document, and I like the document the way it's prepared, and I'm supportive of it, but once, should it, the majority of this body pass it, we would have a discussion item on our agenda on the 13th in regards to the memorandum of understanding between the city and county. We have a meeting Friday 13th.
You're lying.
Mayor, if, if the commission wants to extend that 24, 25-year time, and the county would be agreeable, like, I mean, you can change that timeframe, if, if all parties agree.
I'm, I'm happy with the agreement as written, but like I say, I'm just one vote. I'm one vote, and staff did a wonderful job in negotiating this agreement as written.
Thank you, Judge. Just for your... Mr. Hadden.
Okay. I think those were the only two items, and I'm not opposed to this. Those were just discussion items that would have been asked, had we had a meeting devoted to only this, that I expected that we would have, I would have asked, and Mr. Moore would have given me the same answer, or perhaps he would have gone and done a little research, and come back and told me something I'd rather hear, but maybe not. So, thank you for those responses.
Okay. Any other Commissioners?
I'd just like to say, I'm very, very pleased with the amount of work that's gone into this, because I've seen several drafts, and this actually seems like it meets, it is a balance, because I think it can be a win-win scenario for all parties. There's give and take in any kind of, in the local agreements, but I just want to say, I was pleased with the outcome.
Okay, any other Commissioners? Do you ready to vote?
Yep.
You need a motion.
Do you want to, just restate the motion, please, Commissioner?
To approve, to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement from the city of Franklin County.
Okay. No further questions? Ask the folks to take a call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes, and I'm sorry it's taken so long to get here, but...
Mayor May?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, so we need to adjourn the special meeting.
Maybe we adjourn, Mayor, and go into regularly, or the special scheduled work session.
Move back, Commissioner Bowers. Second, I can apply, Commissioner Hadden, and folks, especially, send down all those committees, they've all said aye. Aye. Those folks like aye, ayes have it. All right, now we are reconvening the regular work session. And again, there again. Any comments? All right. Thank you. Thank you for the vote. First item we have is discussion on, with Paul Sawyer Public Library, regarding a land budget request. And are you folks, are you the chair of the...
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm a non-voting member.
Okay.
Mayor?
I was just gonna, I was gonna jump, if you all didn't mind, it just might be on my figure. Get him out.
It's fine.
Do we have enough seats? Does it look like we didn't have enough seats? That's why I was... We do have enough?
We are doing citizen comments, Mayor.
But we'll go back, we're gonna go back. I just wanted to make sure, because it looked like there was a bunch of folks... Did you have something to say?
I'm here for citizen comments.
Okay, go ahead, we'll do that.
Okay, so I'm coming to the work session tonight to present 120 signatures that we collected over this newly weekend, to support the reworking of the Bridge Street, Second Street intersection, as it was proposed in the Greening of America's Capital study. It's our understanding that city staff has been at work on this area, and have recommendations for the commission, and our purpose is to support the staff recommendations, and encourage the commission to prioritize this project. I remember during the Second Street Form Code planning study, the public meetings focused a lot on pedestrian safety on the Second Street.
I'm sorry, Jim, did you, did you say your name for a reference?
Oh, sorry, Jen Sandler Williamson, at 407 Waltham Street. And these comments were...
You sent an email today, didn't you, Mayor?
Yeah, there was an email today, so I'll be brief on this. But during the, during the Second Street Form Code study, this area was focused on as an area of concern for pedestrian safeties. I think that that probably was what initiated the interest in going for the Greening of America's Capital project with it. It's a confusing intersection for motorists, and a challenging one for pedestrians. The long light cycle thankfully allows for a right turn on red, which keeps traffic from backing up onto the bridge, but it also creates a situation where someone is making the right turn, and committed to the right turn before they might see if a pedestrian is walking into the crosswalk. There, there are a lot of good ideas in the Greening of America's Capital concept, but we want to focus your attention on a prioritization of redoing the intersection in the public right-of-way, and if that can be built in 2014, we would like to see that accomplished, because we're just fearful for an accident that might happen in that intersection. So, I've got 120 signatures to present to...
You can give that to the city department.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate your consideration.
And I'll just add here, if you were free for, I was gonna add, that I saw somebody turn the wrong way down that intersection, again.
I, yeah, actually, I'll just, I'm just talking to a business owner on Bridge Street, that comment came out, and I was sort of shocked to learn that it's not uncommon for someone to start their left turn at Conway, and make the left turn into the dedicated right turn lanes. So, that could be a potential, a great potential for a bad accident. Also, the businesses and residents that live on Bridge Street are important stakeholders, so any discussion on the implementation of the project, or the schedule of the project should be sort of worked through with them, and with plenty of advance notice, so, yes.
Thank you. Did any, thank you so much. And we always ask, just so that, let's say, to bring your name.
Yes, of course, I just, I just got my...
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else have citizen comments?
I just have one question. If, if citizens' comments...
Just, if you don't mind, just state your name for us.
I'm sorry, Martha Gray. This is the only opportunity to talk about any of these discussions, I need to address that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. You can talk about anything under this underwear, under the regular work session.
Yeah.
This special meeting was over.
This is the special work session.
No, it is not. This is the regular work session.
Everybody got, the reason is, because we're doing that next week, too. I know, don't want a lot of stuff that you...
Okay.
Two separate things. Me, too, on what Jim said, actually was in a car with my teenage daughter, who's learning to drive, and she did that left-hand turn up the, so I think it, I mean, and I know she had a friend do the same thing, it happens all the time. And then I guess I also just, I'd like a clarification from Tim Zizoff, if he doesn't mind, just, under consider use of KCDC reimbursement funds, you said there was a priority of items in there?
There is.
And is our building on Bridge Street one of those items? I just wanted a clarification.
It is not.
It is not. I can save that for another day. Thank you.
That's it.
Oh, Martha?
Uh-huh.
I think that, that Brownfield Grant item, I get a question if you were under that as well.
Oh, on the agenda?
That's on the December 16th agenda.
Yeah, is that, so is that, should I bring that up now?
I think that is.
There's an agenda item on the...
16th.
On the consent agenda, item 79, for 2014, to offer as a volume of an application for 2014 Brownfield grant fund, and it mentions specifically down in the background, that they would be used for site citywide, but specifically mentions Second Street, Home Street, and the Riverfront. So, I guess I'd also ask, is that included, our building on Bridge Street?
It gives an assessment of the whole area, and then once they do the assessments, then they prioritize which building, so, I mean, it would be included in all those buildings, of all those areas.
Okay, well, if that's the case, again, if I understand how this consent agenda works, and again, I don't even know what I can do, so I'd like to ask to have it taken off, so I can be involved in that discussion, for that particular item, if we can come in and comment.
We can, we can take stuff off consent, if the Commissioners want to do it, and if there's gonna be a discussion, we can do that.
Move it to new business?
Just wherever it best fits, I would leave it up to the...
Just move it to new business. Just take it off. But also wondered, Mayor, I don't know if this is the appropriate time in the middle of citizen comment, can I make a suggestion, or should I wait? It's related to her issue.
Sure. If you don't mind, since you're using your time. But it won't...
No, no, I'm probably about to ask the same thing again, because I don't understand clearly your procedure.
We're gonna remove that item, correct?
And put it under new business.
And I think what you're concerned about is, one, is like, just one little piece of what'll be looked at, but it's not anything like final, but...
Well, I guess if anything, I would, if I understand how the consent agenda works, it basically just goes through as a matter of course, and if, because this might involve property that we own, I'd just like to be able to participate in that.
We just...
So, if it's on this, if it's not removed from that, we wouldn't be able to do that.
That's right. You're right on the money.
And then this is just the second thing, and again, I apologize if I'm out of order here, I had, talked, discussed this with Tim just a few minutes ago, and also with Lynn, but we would like to come in and talk to you at some point, with our team, about our building, and what our plans for that building are, and where we are in that process, and I don't know if that's something that needs to be worked out now, or if it's just something that we ask, if we build an agenda down the road, or...
I had suggested to Martha that we might, if the Commission is willing. I know that you, Mayor, and I met with Martha and John, like, way back in November or December sometime. I think it would be good if the Commission sat down in a closed session with the two, with some of their team that is in on the project that they're proposing, and if we could have an around-the-table discussion, and deal with that particular issue in a closed meeting, perhaps, I don't know, Wednesday or sometime?
That is Wednesday.
Sometime soon, so that we can get things like, so that we can move on, if you will, in one direction or another.
I thought, not to be the cold water, but I thought that we did move on, and we, we've moved toward the courts. It's, it goes to court in January.
We did.
Okay.
And I guess what I'm asking is, could we have, Martha, tell me if I'm saying more than you once said, but we have a pair of citizens who want to rehab part of our city that I think is worth rehabbing, and, you know, we talk about these projects that are going to be multimillion dollars coming out of the taxpayer pockets, and here we have private citizens that want to do something good for the city on their own, and I think that, I know that we have extended the time, and we've extended the time, and we've extended the time, but financing is not something that is particularly easy to come by, and I think that if we could sit down as a board in a closed meeting, because this is property that, and Rod, Mr. Moore, tell me if we cannot do that, we have had closed meetings about this issue, but if we could have the two individuals in those meetings, with the team that they're dealing with, so that we can have everybody at the table, we've had some private meetings, one or two of us at a time, but if we could have everybody at the table, and if we could all come to some agreement, a timetable that suits not only the city, but the parties that are wanting to do this project, my point is, we talk about multimillion-dollar projects, what's wrong with the meeting, bringing everyone to the table, and then leading with everybody on the same page, and everybody in agreement, this is what will happen by this date, or it won't happen, but we haven't done that yet.
Can I, I think this is why, why we would like to have this kind of meeting, but I guess I'd like to add two things, you probably stopped talking about. One is, when we met individually back in the spring, we told you we thought we'd know something about late summer, early fall, that whether or not we'd be able to finance it. In October, we got a term sheet from a bank, that said that we can make these certain conditions that they spelled out very clearly, they'll finance that. So, we did what we told you we thought we would do. We have, we have made significant progress toward financing. And then the second thing is, as to the court action, and again, without getting into the details, I don't think it's going to do what you think it's going to do.
It's because you don't have any money in the LLC, I'm familiar with that, but, but we still can move forward if we pay to tear it down.
Well, again, I don't think, I, I think the court situation is a lot more complicated than you think it is.
Well, it probably is, because you're right about courts, but anything having to do with lawyers and courts, I understand that, but I think we've made a decision, now the Commission can change, and if, and if they want to, but, you know, we've, as I've said in two or three meetings, my whole life, I've been hearing about that building being rehabbed. It started in the late 70s when we started to hear about it. It's now 2013, I think you all owned it four or five years, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, again, I mean, you know, I think we're all getting this...
And you didn't get the, and so, I think it's time to, but anyway, this doesn't, shouldn't even be on this thing, so...
What I'm asking for is an opportunity to have this discussion, because you have all of these other...
Well, Mayor, can I, we don't make motions in work sessions, but we can, correct? Can I make a motion that we have a closed meeting?
For today?
No. Sometime this week. And I mean, I, I don't, can't make a motion without, can we make, can I, can we have that looked into?
We can ask members if they will, and if they will not work for me, but don't let me be the only one that, I don't want to hold you up if I can break it.
Well, I would definitely like to hear from the two, since, you know, it sounded like some progress, but I don't want to step out of line, I don't know about the legal things, or what we can do, but could we add it to a, a next meeting, instead of trying to set up a third meeting?
Right.
You could.
I think it needs to be a closed meeting.
The problem is, I don't know that it's gonna meet the requirements under 61810 on...
I don't, I would have to look at it, it would not, at first blush, meet the requirements to go in a closed session to discuss property. It may be able to be discussed under litigation.
Litigation.
If that's the case, we would probably want to request the county attorney, Rick Sparks, to attend, since he's the person that's in charge of prosecuting the case in the Franklin District Court.
So, you'll check on that, and just, sure?
I can find out if he'd be willing to. I know this is a busy week for them, because, of course, they're moving their offices from into the new judicial center.
So, we can't add them to the agenda, the regular meeting then?
We could add them, if, if we...
For next Monday?
If that works, because we'll have enough time. We could, we'll be able to do that all the way up until Saturday, if we want to, or Friday, we'll say Friday.
John, I haven't been talking individually, but we have a team of people that are coming from out of town, so it's not, we're not gonna be able to get them here next Monday. And those are the ones, I think, I mean, you've heard from us any number of times, so, you know, what we'd like to do is show you who we're working with, let you ask questions, find out where things stand, and how this is going to play out, and we'd have to have some, you know, two of the people are coming from Memphis, so it's not an easy matter to get them here. And I know you met them briefly in the hallway, because they were running like the last time they were in town, but that was long enough to make introductions, and that was pretty much it, and, so again, you know, I think I...
And some others met them, and some didn't, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, maybe it's just a matter of calling, trying to get on each end, but I guess my primary concern was whether or not our building was going to come up either under the Brownfields, and if it is, I'd like to be able to discuss that, at least have some input, and also whether it was coming up under the KCDC reimbursement fund, whether, whether any discussion of using those funds, where our building is gonna take place, and it sounds like that's not, is that correct?
I'm sorry. Well, we're taking the one item off of the consent calendar, so you can discuss under that, on the 16th. And beyond that, City Attorney will research whether or not, that would be on what... And beyond that, Senator, research whether or not, that would be on, what Mr. Bowers had suggested, being a closed session, whether or not that can come under litigation, show that he will talk with the county attorney to find out, and then I guess can copy you on that.
And then the last thing is whether or not it's going to come up under the, I guess, in a long story short, I'm trying to determine whether or not I need to hang around and say you talk about considering the KC/DC reimbursement funds or not.
On Monday?
No, right here.
It's not going to, I don't think it's on Monday.
I think you'll be all right.
That's all.
Right.
Okay, so the only thing that needs to be discussed is the priority, which is number eight.
Well, hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
It's okay. All right, anybody else have any citizen comments?
My name is Mike Radke, I live number four, Lyman's Park.
Mike what?
Mike Radke. Um, I was a part of the, one of the people that was collecting signatures for the, the petition that Jim Williamson presented, and I just wanted to share a few comments of, of what people said as they were looking at this, just so you can sort of informally hear what, what they were thinking. And with only one exception, everybody sort of broke into two camps. People that had kids, that were walking their kids through the air sections, just said, "Where do I sign?" Didn't need to explain it to them, it was just a no-brainer for them. Um, the other group of people were people that didn't have kids, or maybe their kids had grown up, and most of their reactions were, "Well, let me look at this." And they thought about it a bit, and, and they said, "Sure, I guess if it shortens it from seventy feet to forty feet, that just makes good sense." Just for full disclosure, the one person that had sort of a, a complete opposite reaction was, I believe, a homeless gentleman who didn't own a car, and he thought that the roads were not wide enough, and they needed to be twice as big. So, but, yeah, in general, it was, it was kind of a no-brainer. Everybody just seemed to really get right away what, what kind of a change that would make. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have citizen comments? If not, um, do you all mind if we skip the discussion attendant, begin with staff reports, and jump on down to discussion items?
Library.
So we can, so we can go back up. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Bowers, you're saying, who is the, who's going to make the presentation for the library?
I'm happy to.
Okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just...
No, that's fine. I'm making this for her. Um, well, thank you all very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just for your, you might say you're going to...
Sure, I'm Mark Overstreet, I am a member of the Paul Sawyer Library Board of Trustees, and our legal name is Franklin County Public Library District, but I'm very happy to be here, and thank you for taking the time to, to listen to us and to consider our proposal. Um, in 2006, Mayor, you were there when we opened our new library on Walkin Street, and its usage has far exceeded any, anything that we really reasonably expected. Our circulation is up, we have a tremendous number of people requesting meeting space for programs, we have state government wanting to use our space, and frankly, what we have determined is that the library is such a, a good thing that people want more of it. And so, uh, when we met with the, uh, the city back in the early part of the last decade to talk about acquiring the former parking lot that your family's house formerly resided on, uh, we, we had asked to acquire the entire parking lot, and, uh, at that time, the city thought it might make some sense to retain approximately half of the spaces. And frankly, we were so pleased that we could have that location and maintain this facility in the downtown area where it was close to three schools, where kids from Second Street, kids from Frankfurt High, and formerly Good Shepherd, which is no longer there, could actually walk to the library, use it after school, um, that we readily agree. What we have found is that we need more space, and the board over the last fourteen months has been studying the expansion of the library out the back area of the library, and we even engaged an architect, and that architect has worked as hard as, as he possibly can, but it appears that the only way that we're going to be able to expand the library is actually to encroach on what the city now owns. And, um, in the course of doing that, we will also lose some parking spaces that are currently available to our patrons. What we're here to dis, propose tonight, and I recognize that the city can't take action tonight, and that it's on the agenda for next Monday, I think, is, is that we would like to enter into discussions with the city for the purchase of, for the remainder of those parking spaces. We believe that we can do it in such a fashion that it, uh, will put money in the city's coffers, and facilitate an important downtown destination. Now, I, it's my understanding that perhaps the new Judicial Center has, also has some interest in those spaces, and, um, I just recently learned of that, but I have found both Judge Collins and Ms. Jump to be very reasonable people, and very easy people to work with, and we would certainly be more than willing to sit down and discuss with them a win-win situation for the city, for the county slash Judicial Center, and for the library. And, um, we would just hope that you would, um, direct your staff to, to meet with us, to see what, what, what is possible to achieve.
I think that sounds reasonable, and congratulations on the success of libraries.
Thank you very much.
Turned out very nicely. And thanks, you all, for your hard work. Did you want to, were you wanting to say that you're just listening?
Oh, I'm just listening, but, you know, wanted you to know, you talked about money.
You might want to just state your name for the record.
Donna Gibson, Director of the Paul Sawyer Public Library. You talked about money, we, the board has been very careful, knowing that we wanted to expand, so we have the money ready to do that, and, um, we've also, you know, taken into consideration everything we know about, for instance, the, the easement at the back for the boat dock, we're, we're fine with that, we've never had any problems with the, the boat people or access, so we, we wouldn't change anything, and we, we just would like you to consider some of that at a, at a fair price.
Thank you. Did you all have any other presentation? If not, commissioners may want to, I don't know if they have questions or not. Commissioners have any questions that they would like to ask?
I have a question for, oh, go ahead.
Now, the KSU parking that's on the side, is that included in your request?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Although we'd be happy to have it, we understand that's spoken for, so...
Commissioner Bowers?
Well, it was that, that...
Oh, that's a thing.
We're leasing some to KSU, correct? So it doesn't include that?
Uh, what are you talking about?
It's my understanding that, uh, the road that wraps around the back of the former federal building, Paul Sawyer Library, those spaces have been leased, leased to KSU. We are not asking for, we're not asking for those.
Any other comments?
I'm, well, I think, I think the city attorney's probably going to say what I was going to ask. Well, what, one question I have is, does the library have its highest demand on the weekend, uh, so that if there is another use needed for those spaces during the work week, they'd be perhaps available from eight to four-thirty?
It's any consideration.
But actually, the library has its highest demand almost any time the store's open.
Yes.
But, uh, but having said that, I, I think that, again, we, we, I, I have a couple of ideas that I think would allow multiple users to, to work with it, but, you know, obviously, we'd have to sit down and understand what the other uses would, would be, and what times they would most likely want it. Um, certainly, we're open to, to discussions if we're trying to work something out.
And that's been a pleasant part about having the parking lot where we do, we've been able to share it with churches, we don't need it on Sunday morning, and they do, so we feel like we have a good relationship with the community around us, and, and that's worked out well.
But it is, it's always, it's always busy. I mean, anytime, just any power of the day, it doesn't really matter. It's just on the doors of a...
How many parking spaces do you anticipate gaining from as a result, if this worked out?
Probably about thirty-six we would gain from you, and, and we would try to minimize using up any of those with the new building, that's, but we would probably gain thirty-six.
What are the, of course, you may not know then, but what are your alternatives if we don't sell it? What are your options?
Well, no one's ever called me a Pollyanna, but, um, actually, we haven't gotten that far in our thinking. Uh, we, you know, we, back in the beginning of this millennium, the board members of the Paul Sawyer Public Library District, and frankly, the city commission made a commitment to bring this lot, to keep this library downtown. Your dad voted for that. Um, and, uh, we would like to stay downtown, we have no plans on leaving downtown, however you all vote, but we just haven't thought what we would do. There are, there are a number of very difficult operating issues that arise when we try to create a satellite on one side of the town or the other, it just doesn't work. We looked at it when we were looking at whether we wanted to stay downtown back in the first part of the two thousands, and, uh, if the cost, our cost would go up significantly, and that's going to affect service, we're going, we're going to have less funds to spend on things that the patrons want, and, um, we think that we can, that we can structure any sort of transaction in a fashion that meets everyone's needs. Uh, you know, just like you said this earlier this evening, the best sign of a, of a fair compromise is when all sides don't get everything they want, and I, and I think that's what we'll wind up with, and we recognize that, and we're willing to, to come to the table with that in mind.
Mayor, uh, the city manager had asked me to address during, uh, staff reports, a letter that I've drafted to go to Sally Jump, that really, that addresses this very issue, and so that the folks from the library board don't have to wait until staff reports, if I could just...
Sure.
Give a brief report. Uh, the city manager, and, and I, and others met with Sally Jump, the Franklin Circuit Court Clerk, on December the third, uh, to discuss parking issues, because, of course, the Judicial Center's going to open here, hopefully, next week, and she's concerned about parking issues for jurors, and she indicated that, uh, every other month, they're going to need approximately sixty to seventy spaces, uh, the first two days of the new jury term, uh, for orientation for those jurors, so there's sixty to seventy spaces. Other than jury orientation days, there could be up to forty to fifty jurors in attendance at the courthouse at the beginning of the trial, and of course, once the jury's been selected, then that number would be reduced down to twelve or twenty-four, and the jurors that are selected would have dibs on some of the thirty-five free spaces in the St. Clair parking garage. Uh, and she indicated that it's, that she anticipates that on the average, parking will be needed on a daily basis for between twelve to twenty-four jurors, and again, some will be in the St. Clair parking garage, but others will need to be either in the Sullivan parking garage, or in the parking behind the, the Paul Sawyer Public Library, whatever you all decide to do. Right now, all of the spaces in the Sullivan parking garage are spoken for. As a matter of fact, they're overbooked. You know, they actually sell a few more spaces that are in the garage, just because not all the spaces are used on a daily basis. That being said, the personnel from Central Parking indicated that they would be able to accommodate, uh, some of the folks there in the Sullivan parking garage, and my understanding was they'd be able to accommodate probably thirty to forty of those people, uh, but that there would be some overflow parking needed at another location. Uh, there, in our discussions with Central Parking, uh, and with Ms. Jump, of course, she raised the same issue that Mr. Overstreet raised, which is that the city committed to work with the Judicial Center folks as, as cooperatively as possible in order to keep the Judicial Center downtown, and to help with parking, and, uh, so in any event, the discussion was that, that we'd come back to the city board of commissioners and suggest that the jurors be charged a dollar a day for parking, instead of the three dollars a day for parking that, that, uh, private customers are, are charged, and then there would be free overflow parking in wherever the overflow parking is going to be. Uh, and of course, there was discussion about the fact that parking is, is going to be more at a premium, once the, uh, once the Judicial Center opens up, and particularly if Paul Sawyer builds the, uh, expansion to the library. So I just raised those issues while the folks from the library are here, so they kind of know the context that we were, of our discussions with Sally Jump, and, and perhaps it makes sense to have a meeting with Sally Jump and the representatives of the library, to see if there's some way to share those spaces, you know, because if your highest demand is only going to be the first two days of every near, every new jury term, you know, maybe the problem is not as, as big as, as, as some people think it might be.
Mr. Mayor, man, there's probably nobody in Franklin County who's happier about the Judicial Center coming back downtown after four years than, than I am. I think we can work with the city and with the courts, and reach an accommodation that allows the city to, uh, live up to its commitment to the courts, while at the same time facilitating this expansion of the library. If we can't, we can't, and, and, and we understand that, but we're, we, we believe that this is, this is one instance where reasonable people can actually reach a agreement, and I don't know anyone that's involved in the proceeding that's not reasonable.
I'll, I'll say, well, and I've, I've worked with Mr. Bowers Street on a number of things, and nobody is more pleasant to work with than you are.
Nobody?
Mr. Kirkland is up at the actual level, too, and commissioners, of course. I'm just saying, just, you all are.
You, you've got to seem to moderate a quick recall, actually.
So, so we'll... We'll meet with them, if that's okay.
Sure. And, and that's fully what we're raised.
Okay. And we, we appreciate the board for coming by today.
Is Mr. Templeman in that? As well?
He is not to this date, we could see, we could invite him to the...
I say invite him, he's got that other garage that he is...
Yeah, is it?
Oh.
Mr. Templeman? Does he want to come?
It was supposed to be for daily parking.
Could we, as another option, not that this is a good one or a bad one, uh, is there any way it would work where we did some sort of long-term lease with them, where we still maintained ownership?
We, we would be more than happy to, to consider that, and, I mean, our preference, our first preference would be to own it, for obvious reasons. Um, as far as the, uh, physical encroachment on the city's lot, we're, we're hopeful that it would just be a, actually, just be a matter of, of air rights, obtaining air rights above the, the actual surface, but we don't know that yet. But certainly, we're at the stage where I think it makes sense to talk about different types of, of media, whether it's a lease or a purchase.
Well, the only reason why, I'm always nervous when there's a lot of moving parts, and, and so there's a lot of moving parts with this. You know, we've got K-State next door, they're going to want more parking than they have. I mean, we, we all, if they end up getting the funding for the center that they hope that is at the old library, they're, they're all of a sudden going to need all kinds of parking, for people to go in that place, and it, because it's going to be kind of like a museum.
Buses.
Yeah, I know, they'd buses, but they're going to be, anyway, with all those moving parts, I'd be nervous about anything that locks us into something.
But that long-term lease is a good idea.
Well, it might be. Of course, the agreement with KSU is a lease now. Yeah. It's another...
It's another, it's probably a good idea, too.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it sounds like at least we'll get started with folks talking, trying to come up with solutions. And we'll get that back, just, I guess, we have to give you a specific time, but I believe the staff can start working on that like immediately. And you all, you want to contact Mr. Overstreet, Ms. Gibson, or the board chair?
I'm going to contact Ms. Gibson.
So you're going to continue to do that? It's okay.
Yes, she does a good job of covering this.
Do you want to introduce any of your board members that are here with us? You don't have to add this guy.
Sure, that's Janet Lau, Janet's a voting member, and Patty Scruton, she's a voting board member. Bob Kelman is a voting board member. And I guess I'm just-
Mary Lynn.
Mary Lynn.
Mary Lynn's the chair, I'm sorry. And you're so omnipresent.
Well, I didn't know you were the chair, I'm sorry.
Now we're going to- They did a great job.
Well, thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we be excused?
Yes, sure. But you could also staff if you'd like to.
I bet you won't, too.
Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
I appreciate you not bringing my own.
Yeah.
Is anybody here on the, there's nobody here like on the water beautification project? Are there any staff? Are there any staff?
No, there's none.
Oh, okay.
We'll be very brief.
That's fine, and if you don't mind, just- No, you can say, I just didn't know who else.
It's not really a presentation.
This is Paul Looney and Joe Tucker from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And we're back, the Wilkinson Street Beautification Project, if you recall, was adopted by the Garden Club of Frankfurt. They presented an eight thousand dollar check a while back. And it's, it's really turned into a great partnership. This is a board that was done right here before transportation got involved, wondering what to do with the Garden Club money. So it was a partnership then between the city and the private enterprise, the Frankfurt Garden Club, and the tourism, which Robin Antonucci's here for, from when she was on the beautification committee for the World Equestrian Games. It's the medians going down Wilkinson Boulevard from the little R.J. Corman Broadway Bridge and initially to the, up right past the Capitol Plaza Tower. Well, when the Transportation Cabinet saw that the eight thousand dollar check was being presented to the city, they thought they might need to get involved and tell us that the road was going to be torn up. So, so they've come up with a few things that they're going to do on their end, and it's going to enable us to go all the way to Buffalo Trace and beautify the islands all the way from Buffalo Trace to there at actually no cost to the city. The Garden Club's money, and I'm going to let them just say what they've done, what they have done to beautify it. And, and like I said, it's really no cost to the city, other than what you will see on the consent calendar for the voting meeting is we have to provide maintenance of the islands through there. The plant board has also agreed to do the, get water to the islands and put the agricultural meters. So it's a partnership between everybody, and I'd like for you all to tell what you all came up with on your own.
It's a pavement rehabilitation project on Wilkinson Boulevard. We're going to completely replace the pavement and replace the medians with that. And our, our standard's putting back in concrete because the state doesn't like to maintain much of anything. We don't have a whole lot of state forces doing maintenance now, so. But when we found out about this project, we decided to put back in seventeen inches of topsoil and then either sod or mulch, depending on where you wanted it. A third of us designed this mulch so it can be landscaped easily, and the rest is designed as sod. And it'll stay there until we go in and add landscaping in.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
So basically, they're paying for the soil and the sod and the, and the mulch. And the Garden Club's paying for the plants. And we also have money in a, in an account that, where the Berry Hill, remember where the Berry Hill project where they twirled all the trees? And we've got money in an account there if we need some money for some additional. So it's really no, no expense to the city, it's just a maintenance deal.
All this good news.
No, no, I'm good. Joe, project manager, he took care of everything.
I will say again, like opportunity to say that Mr. Looney-
You get bike lanes on there?
Was, without a doubt, the best newspaper carrier. I got to tell you, I mean, really.
I did one thing right.
No, that, that was a school for it, you'd be the headmaster of that.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Long field.
There's no questions.
Timeline?
The project let in November and should have been awarded, so there are some, we've basically set it up to avoid the major events that happened in May, early June downtown. So there, probably a lot of the major work won't start until after the expo. We're doing, we're doing a lot of the pipes for drainage issues. You probably saw the signs this weekend, it'll put up high water. So we're redoing a lot of the pipes and stormwater inlets. So that work may start after the first of the year. Most of the major work will probably be after the expo, I think, right, Joe?
Yeah, the original completion date set up is October fifteenth. That's been on the way to next year and everything else, but around that time, it should be four.
Thank you all so much, it's great news. Thanks again.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. East West Connector Bike Lane with Mr. Troy Hearn is also with the Transportation Cabinet. And I got to say something different, too. Everybody comes asking, one of the best bike riders, one of the best bike riders anywhere, and-
You just say that because I'm also a mechanic.
I was going to say, and, I was going to say, though, I was going to say, the best mechanic.
Well, one of the top five in the state. With Troy Hearn, I'm a citizen, I also work with the Transportation Cabinet. I'm the Bicycle Pedestrian Coordinator for the state. There's an opportunity to develop a pretty extensive bicycle facility in the shoulder of the East West Connector. And it, the, it would be in conjunction with a resurfacing project. The project limits are the entire length of the East West Connector. And that would be from Lot 1 ramp to 127 on the west side of town. I'd sent some paperwork out a while back, and I have extra copies of that. The city would not be responsible for any of the construction of that, kind of like the, the presentation earlier. The city would be responsible for the maintenance. Specifically, the maintenance would be sweeping or blowing debris out of the bike lane for the entire corridor. I'd sent out a sample memorandum of use agreement. I'm not the final say-settle on those agreements, but that's part of my job is to write those memorandum of use agreements and, and work with the city to finalize those. That would be about the only thing that would have to happen before the state would include that into their maintenance project. There's normally about seventy miles of resurfacing that's done in each highway district each year. It's about eleven projects. The East West Connector was like number thirteen on their list, so it's not scheduled for 2014, but it could be done as soon as 2014. They are doing their finalization of their list at the end of this month. So I would need to go at the end, by the end of this month and say that the city has agreed to a maintenance plan. It doesn't have to be the specific one that I said earlier. But to have that done, I need to know as soon as possible.
Is there any problems with that?
There are some staff questions about the requirements of the city for the maintenance. I think Rob has pointed out, our city attorney, excuse me, has pointed out some issues, and I forwarded those to you. I think the commission has some information from Public Works Director, Mr. Bradley. I don't know that any of which are issues that we cannot resolve. Most of them are just questions and some specifics as to what the commitments are. I'm hopeful we could get those. Do you need a formal approval from the commission?
No.
Our next meeting is the sixteenth.
Well, the, the city has to, we would agree on a maintenance plan. And then we would turn that maintenance plan in to the Maintenance Division and then let them know that we want to move forward on this project. And then at that point, the project manager with the resurfacing program would be in contact with someone with the city and also the city engineer, and they would work out some, you know, other details other than that maintenance agreement.
What sort of a timeline are you looking at that?
Well, if it-
For the maintenance agreement?
I need that, like, by the end of the week. The sooner I can put that into their work plan, the better. The Maintenance Division typically does not like to build anything other than resurfacing the road. Although it's a federal mandate that they are to include or consider all bicycle and pedestrian facilities when that opportunity arises. This is an opportunity where I live here in town, and I know it well, and I ride my bike around it all the time. I have the ability to- Kind of take advantage of it.
Pop the tire on it.
I'm, I'm in support of bike lanes primarily because of safety, and I just heard that one commissioner's been hit. And because people ride their bikes whether they have a bike lane or not, so if they have a bike lane, it's more safe. My question to you, because you're such an experienced biker, has the city ever been sued because some debris is in the thing and they fall?
I don't know.
Okay, well, that means it's not high.
People get sued all the time for everything. I was sued five times two years ago, so I used to own a business here in town. People sued me for the silliest things. They didn't win, but I had to hire an attorney and had to spend money to, for them not to win. I know having the memorandum, a, a maintenance agreement is another buffer that helps for litigation. As you can see, well, here was our agreement with the state, we followed that agreement, you know. But some things, as a bike rider, I want to be as specific as possible because I ride my bike year-round. I think it needs to be maintained year-round. Some things, you know, most of the memorandum of use agreements are very vague. Everything that predated me in this position was so vague that none of the facilities anywhere in the state get cleaned. And they don't get used. I would hate for something like that to be constructed and not get used.
Tom, have y'all done any rough sense of what, what the cost might be?
Not yet. We were talking just here before the meeting about trying to define some of the terms, just per my comments. One of the things that just kind of dawned on me, too, was the, the snow removal, because you said you wanted it year-round. The state's going to push the snow only so far, is that we-
I would push, that the state would be responsible for the snow removal if they do it currently on that stretch of road.
There's, there's some things that we just need to get together and hash out.
Yeah, that's right, and we may have to live, you know, I, I don't ride as much as you do, but I do ride. And I did get hit on the East West Connector by a truck. The mirror hit me and knocked me over, so that's not a real good place to ride. I do it, but it's not to the best place. It's also a horrible road because of the state of the road. But I, I think it's a stretch of the imagination to think that the state or the city is going to clear that bike lane when we're having several days of inclement weather, because there's nowhere to push the snow. If you're not going to push it to the side of the road, where are you going to push it?
There is right-of-way, there's about three and a half feet of right-of-way outside of the pavement edge currently. And it's, it's a rural cross-section, there's no curb and gutter along that section.
Commissioner, I think all those things are things that we could define.
Yeah, I don't mean that, I just think that's, that's a stretch to think they're going to do that.
If, if we think it's unreasonable, then we would just put it in there that snow removal both-
They can all handle the details.
Right, right.
I just think it'd be odd, I've never seen it.
Just one broad question, Troy, and that is, could the maintenance requirement be for just ten months out of the year? So that, or, you know, nine months out of the year?
Absolutely. We, we could write it however we want, however we agree. I mean, we, we have that ability, it's very flexible. And it doesn't have to be swept. We've already talked about some simpler modifications because it's a rural cross-section. We can just have the brush that just blow, that pushes it off. There's also other examples where somebody can pull a backpack blower behind the bicycle and just blow it clean that way.
So what, if you need to know by the end of the week, and it needs to be communication with staff and with you to get this handled, how do we proceed?
And I, really, by the end of the month, it's really a big-
That's what I'm thinking.
If we can just say, if there's no objection, we can have staff directed to work out wording for an agreement.
If it's okay with you guys, we've already started kind of a modification of it. We can just email back and forth, and then we'll just email it out to everybody once we kind of deem it finished, and then, and we can even alter it again from there.
Great.
Little go on the sixteenth, sixteenth.
Can you wait to the sixteenth?
Absolutely. We have state government, nobody's working between now and figures anyways.
These meetings are not recorded.
I do have other-
I said they are recorded.
Like the rumble strips, like this would be done for the rumble strips. So there are other, if you guys want any of this material, I'll just leave it here. And then in that project listing, there's also a future, the exact same bike lane would be done on Martin Luther King all the way to East Main. And I would try to put that into that next resurfacing list, but that was probably three years down the road, so.
Do we get to add that mileage to our East Blade account?
If it's benefits you, then yes. I don't have that, you know, I don't have the power to say that, but you know.
We'll send it to Mr. Farley. Or Pazlega, I said Farley.
Am I allowed to introduce something else?
Of course.
Okay. This would be for traffic calming on a Glens Creek Road next to Capitol View Park. The current mountain bike trail system crosses that road. It's not happened yet, but to maybe be ahead of the curve, I would recommend rumble strips and signage on Glens Creek Road at the little markers on the picture there. The trail system is in the process of actually being expanded into the area on the other side of Glens Creek Road. We did a statistical analysis of the number of people using the trail system. It was as high as five hundred people a week, runners and bikers. Now, some of those folks were doing multiple laps, but we had trail counters, and it was almost five hundred people a week. So there's up to five hundred people a week that are crossing that road. And then that's an example of signage.
That's great.
And that would be a, a city project. The state probably would not pay for that, but if they would, I would try to champion that.
Well, I can't remember, is Glens Creek state-maintained or city?
That is a state-maintained, well, that is a state-maintained.
Because I don't know that we're allowed to-
Put up signs on state roads?
If it was a share the road sign, we have a share the road sign process, and that's easy, the state would pay for that. But this is not a share the road sign, this is a multi-use crossing sign with rumble strips.
That was my biggest concern, like the rumble strips, since it's going to go through a stick, I don't know that we can-
I was going to try to work on this after New Year's.
Perfect.
I will go with the, let's see if the state will pay for it all first approach, but if they don't, you guys now have the information there. It'd be approximately two hundred dollars per sign, plus the rumble strips. It's about twelve hundred dollars total is what the, the cost of installation and everything would be, so.
Well, thank you, thank you for the work on the transportation.
Thank you so much. Keep up the good work, Troy.
I didn't even have to draw any pictures.
You want to? Go ahead. Let's play hangman.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The yellow dots are marked. And we're about a month away from having all of the mountain bike trail system marked with my- with mileage markers and color-coded for emergency management.
That's awesome.
We met on that in summer, but it's taken us a while, but we're almost there.
Thank you so much.
Next item, our emergency management director is not here tonight because it's a part-time or seasonal position, so we don't have anyone here. But if y'all have any questions, I'm not going to answer some questions if you have some questions.
I've got a bunch. I suggest if it's all right, Mayor, that we do that item last, so that people that want to leave can leave.
That's true.
If that's all right.
Of course. What about the KCDC reimbursement funds? You can do that. Okay, go ahead.
As the commission knows, in October, we did receive a reimbursement from KCDC for a near $230,000. Those were unencumbered, unexpected dollars that we did receive revenue. So I did ask the staff to see if they had any suggestions that we might propose to the commission, well, methods or ways to use it, including putting it in the general fund to enhance our reserve, other economic development projects. You have a list in your packet that shows about 12 different options. The staff has been meeting on a regular basis. We are recommending four options for those funds that total just over $200,000. The first one is for our fire truck, the Ario, the Quint. Our chief has applied a grant for. There is a local match of about $70,000, $72,000. That was one. You heard about another project this evening regarding engineering design for Second Street and Bridge Street, improvement project to that intersection. We are estimating at this point that the engineering design would cost in the area of $60,000 to $90,000, and some of those funds can be taken from Municipal A, but some of it's outside the right-of-way, so we're looking at possibly $30,000 for that. Staff has been working on a grant and loan program for our historic district to cover commercial and residential properties, and we're looking at possibly $40,000 for that. And the final recommendation was about $60,000 for the Tier One abandoned buildings that we could remove within the community. The commission has already seen what the Tier One numbers are. The planning director has provided you with a number of pictures and a list of those projects. So that totals about $200,000. We would be looking for some direction from the commission if any of these four projects are on your radar. The staff could come back with more details, more information, and perform a consideration. We do have a planning director, Gary Mueller, planning supervisor, Maya DeRosa, grants manager, Rebecca Hall, Chief Sloan, who can answer any questions about the proposed projects.
Gary, if you, I've asked this before, but if you bid, if, for example, the commission supported the, whatever, the $64,000, if you bid all five of them at once, rather than bidding each building, can you think we can get a better price?
We did, literally, only as a group. One of the firms did give us a discount, like $3,000.
I like them all. And I'm fine with all four of them. I think it's a good use of the money, promotes, well, we hope it promotes economic development. That's hard to measure, but I think all those things work, so I would support it.
I like all four of those two of them. I also like number 11 that's not on there, and that's about signage. So I guess we have to look at the general funds if we go with this, since that would take us a long amount of investment.
There may seem to be some monies available, but we can certainly look at this as an option or a budget as an option, if you've done that here correctly.
You know, we're building, you know, we got the, we just talked about the buildings, the community that you built, we're talking about the parking. If you don't do a better job of directing people to parking, you know, we've got a problem that we didn't create, and we just went proactive in watching that.
You have a committee. That's where we are. We do have a committee that's been working, looking at it from VFI. Also, the same people that I mentioned earlier, we are working on a weight-finding option. If there are some funds here and the commission is open for the weight-finding project, we can certainly insert that as well.
I support Mr. Hanes in that, and maybe we can do a really good job with our 206 and cut it some, figure out a way to do it cheaper, and then have more money left for the sign.
We are looking at a partnership with the signage, and we do have some very preliminary numbers on Phase One, which would be the area that we would look at, number of signs and some design concepts. So I think if the commission is okay, we could move forward with that one as well.
Any objections? No. And we'll take all the, some of the older signs that have been worked on. I forgot what year it was when we did this the last time. It's been, do you remember, do you have any documents when this was done last?
It seems to have been a long time.
So some of those signs are going to have little things connected to it that probably need to be reviewed.
Yeah, I just had a question about five and six.
All right. Thank you.
May I ask a few questions, Mayor?
Sure.
The commissioners, thank you. When, is the comprehensive plan up to get redone any time?
Does it need to be updated again?
Yeah.
Yes. In 2015.
Okay.
So it starts in 2014.
Okay. Which, that's number five on this list for people who don't have this. And I also like number six, trying to get more professional services to make the entire city website more business-friendly. Just to throw it in there. I mean, I think they're all, they're all great.
I like sixteen. Like it.
And I think six may dovetail with what KCDC's trying to do. They're in the midst of updating their website right now.
Yeah.
So it may be a way that we can work that in there.
We'll bring these items back to you individually in the next couple of months, starting in January.
Thank you very much. Okay. You want to go, you want to go to staff report? I mean, discussion of the tenant agenda, is that what you want to do next? You said, and do the emergency management thing last.
That'd be my preference. Okay, you're the, whatever y'all thought.
If there's no objections, does anybody have any items on the agenda? We changed one of the items to make it a, an item under new business. Next item, staff reports.
Well, it might be timely with the discussion of downtown parking, but we're moving forward with an electronic chalking device to mark the tires downtown, and also a cloud-based records management system. And what this will afford us to do is to enforce the ordinance as it is written, which means previous scofflaws, people who have gotten five tickets or more, or who haven't paid their tickets, they can be held accountable now.
Oh, good.
So the ordinance, the way it's written, if you have five tickets in a calendar year, your car can be impounded, which means removed from the street. My point is, you know, we have, the ordinance is written with the escalating fines for subsequent offenses. It's a pretty good ordinance, but we haven't been able to enforce it. I think we have a solution now that will allow us to do it, because obviously, there's going to be a lot of competition for parking spaces, even in the garages. So, you know, the more we can hold a task with the on-street parking, it will help the businesses, because, you know, all these people that work downtown have to park, but the business people of downtown would like to see their customers have a place, too. So, you know, we'll try to keep our end of the bargain up.
Thank you.
Chief, is there, you know, one of the challenges when you start to apply something that you haven't applied, is all of a sudden, everybody gets upset that it's being applied to. So do we need to come up with a way to communicate to the public that it's now going to be, and this may be a bad idea, that they're now going to be applied and they need to be, you see what I'm saying? Because otherwise, they're going to be calling us all day.
Absolutely. It would be an excellent idea, and I think perhaps a tippy-tap of Mr. Quinn's little fingers there.
Maybe you can do a story on it.
Well, maybe he can mention it, and then we will do that before we implement it, but we hope to do it around the first of the year, sometime in January, hopefully. But yes, sir, we can certainly do a public education.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a great idea. I just, and hopefully with education starting to enforce it, things get a lot better.
I would hope so. Okay, thank you. We have our planning supervisor and director, Mueller, Maya, do you have any?
I was hoping you could put on the agenda next week, the formal appointments to the nuisance code hearing board. It's now been created. I met with them last Tuesday and told them, you created it, but you weren't formally appointed. So maybe we could put that on there. That's not one that I normally fill out, so that's fine. And I also explained to the staff and to the board, that was televised, the Code Enforcement Board, December, we're going to send courtesy warning letters out, a set of notices of violations for all new violators, because the ordinance takes effect in January, and to eliminate continued Code Enforcement Board items, all of December is going to be a courtesy warning. We have a new ordinance takes effect in January, and then we'll issue violations and citations in January, February. Just try to help streamline that transition. Thoughts, Chief?
Thanks.
Got your other question? I'm sorry. Gary?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us a little bit about your office's relationship with the OY since you've been here?
It doesn't need to be that long. Sure. We-
When did you come here?
2002.
I remember a hightery rate.
You were, yes. I was told by City Mayor of Time, do not touch the OY. Don't do anything to the OY, the building, structure. Shortly thereafter, things changed, positions changed, and we brought it back up, and we got bids for demolition. And then Mr. Gray came in and said he was going to be trying to acquire the property. So the city commission gave him time. He acquired the property-
How long ago was that?
That was in '04, '03, '04. I think '04, '05. The city commission gave him two years to-
What year is it this year?
2013.
Thank you.
The end.
Are you not oriented to time?
No, I'm just trying to make sure we're all, know how long this has been going on.
In 2009, we cited our office, cited him as an abandoned property. The Board of Zoning Adjustments determined that it was not abandoned because he had the intent to market it. So it has never been on the list of abandoned property since then, because it was appealed. The following year, he came to the city commission, 2011, I think it was, and got approval to apply for a grant. So if his intent to market it was-
I actually think that was 2012, but keep going.
If that was going to allow, if the intent to market it was going to not be abandoned, I didn't put on any abandon this the following year, because we granted him the ability to apply for grants. What we did, get approval to start the process of issuing a citation, a similar citation. For the zoning adjustments, gave him six months, the Code Enforcement Board gave him six months. Came back, issued a $2.00 fine. Thirty days later, went back, well, 60 days later, we went back. They tabled it for two months, and they issued a $500.00 fine. And then came to unify all that we were going to file a court for the ordinance. I mean, there's been consecutive failures, just all boiler, and then the court. Hearing date, January 50. I've tried to get bids early of the year, early of this year, for demolitions, to get some cost estimates. The owners did not allow-
Wouldn't let you in, would they?
Bidders to look at the property. Correct. So they didn't get any bids. And, excuse me. He's said a lot of correspondence, a lot of steps, issues, process, procedural processes that were needed when they were getting the grant stage. I did not receive any correspondence, other than, can I get a copy of that again from the greats? And that's the last correspondence. It's been about a year since I've made any correspondence with them. Other than Code Enforcement Board, which is very limited.
Thanks.
Chief Sloan?
Yes, sir.
Planning supervisor, DeRosa, do you have any comments?
Thank you.
Grants manager? City attorney?
One thing, and Tom may have done this, but Derek Gray passed his professional engineering exam, so he is now a P.E.
No.
Police Works Director?
I have one out of it. This is yours, by the way. No, we got a copy. We were approached by a representative of Sprint in our own Nextel. They have a building and tower next to one of our fire stations that sits Nextel, is defunct. They are pulling all their equipment out of. They want to know if we want the building and the heating there that's involved with it. We actually think we do have a use for it, and it's either that, or they tear the whole building down as they go. So we are investigating that, but we'd like to add it to the agenda to sign the agreement.
For free?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's a big one, yeah. That's a big one.
Well, probably actually save money, because the use that we're going to use it for, we're going to have to build something.
It's getting better.
Is it the one that's there?
The board? Yeah.
Mayor, I think we tell Vicki Pettis that we could not put this on for the sixteenth, because, but can we go ahead and put her resolution on?
I think she wanted to come make the presentation.
I think she does, so can you put her on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, we did.
You did? I thought you told her that it was special and we couldn't do it. Well, you're going to put it on, so put it on.
Yeah, we did put it on the sixteenth. That's what we told her.
Where will it?
It will be a resolution, and she will give a presentation.
Yes, let her present it.
Yeah, I just thought, let her present it.
Mr. Parrish?
Let her present it.
I think we're good, Your Honor. Oh, let me say one thing.
Sure.
Our HR director could not be here this evening. She did want to add an item to the agenda with regard to a resignation and demotion for personnel.
Okay. We got, yeah, you. We'll say, under the old, old, this comment, tremendous job on all of our response staff on last week during two power outages, there's a number of things that police and fire and emergency management were involved with that they're even, I don't know if anybody knows about, but did a lot of good work together, police, fire, communications, emergency management, and sewer department. I think you were okay, though. They were, everybody was checking on your stuff. It was manageable. But it was quite a problem for a bit, and that many people going down in the wintertime would be- And that many people going down in the wintertime would be a major problem for us, so we got very lucky. So, our folks are addressing, trying to get more information that hopefully will make more, more sense as to what went wrong and why it went wrong. But it's good work. It did show us, though, that we need to, there's some equipment we're going to have to buy for, I'm not sure which department. Kind of, I think everybody realized just how much, some things were needed that took a while to get, but eventually got it. But we thank everybody for being there.
And the great work cleaning the roads.
They did. I was kind of including them, sorry. I was lumping everything under the, under one category there. But, yeah, the separation of outage, ice storm, boat dock broke loose and was going down the river. I'm trying to think, there's just so many, I have to get a file report because there's a lot of things that sort of overwhelmed our folks for a bit, but they handled it and managed to get through. All right, old business. Did anybody have any old business?
And I don't like to think that I beat a dead horse, but I'm still very saddened by the fact that the Swim Play Frankfurt fell through. And I think most of the commissioners and most of the people in the city know this, but I also have a lot of people who've contacted me, asking me to make sure that I stand strong and that I help represent them, which is why I'm elected into this position as well, is to represent the people. I do believe that as a community, as elected officials of our city, we need to be a frontrunner on indoor recreational facilities, that our city needs this. We don't just need an outdoor recreational facility that's going to be open just for season. And I'm hopeful that as a city, that we can continue to work with the county and possibly with the state to find a way to bring indoor recreational facility to our community.
Chris, I want to thank, just say thanks for bringing that up, too. It reminded me, it sort of got misrepresented by some folks, that some of us on the commission were not in favor of this large proposal. And I think, in fact, every commissioner and I voted to support that. And I think, go back in the record, you'll find that I've been on record since nineteen ninety-something in supporting indoor recreation facility that would work for our community. And back in, earlier this year, the commission voted to ask the Parks Board to research funding options and what types of facilities would work in indoor facility and what the city Parks Department could manage. And they came back and made a recommendation, and that recommendation was for an outdoor aquatic facility. But they still supported moving forward and supporting a larger attempt by Swim Play Frankfurt to request state funding in twenty-five million dollar range. And then if that was not successful, then the city did not want to miss the opportunity to get money to fund an outdoor facility while the rates were low and the opportunity was there. So, I think that got this construed, and somehow came up that the commission did not support it, when in fact, the commission voted twice, once in October and once...
Last month.
Last month, to support that facility. And I think the record will speak for itself that the commission actually did make those comments.
Mayor's been like a proponent for the indoor, we used to call it the aquatic facility, since way back when I first came on the commission.
And I think I...
So, the big thing is, we needed more detailed plans, we needed more answers, and we all supported moving forward to get those answers and get those details in the end.
I think all those things are accurate, all three of the things, all the things that the three of you said. I think Commissioner Haddon has been sort of taking the lead on this one. She's talked the most about it, I think has the most passion toward it. And I know the mayor's been passionate toward it as well. I think we, I think that perhaps what needs to be done is something the city manager said a week or so ago, and that is, I think that we need to explore, if we don't want this to die, we also know that we can't afford it unless it's done in a large partnership and creative ways to finance it. You know, and it may be a creative building where you find a huge abandoned building and retrofit that. I don't know if it's going to be done creatively. I suggest that we have staff explore a couple of people to see whether or not we could have a feasibility study and to see whether or not we can have a joint feasibility study funded by the city, the county, and the state.
Exactly.
And so that we actually have the numbers. What really did, what Commissioner Bauer said is right on the money, which is, when we were, when we were given the Swim Play concept, it's conceptually strong and the building looked great, et cetera. The problem was, is nobody really had enough specific detail on the money to give us enough comfort to give a blank check. And so, and I don't think the county did either. And so, as a result, that's why it died.
We were being asked to vote for a concept, an idea, rather than a specific plan.
But they've done a lot of good work, and so we can use it. Use some of the same people on the, so, is that something we can look at?
I just wanted to be clear that the commission...
Yeah, we did.
The city commission voted to support that, and the city commission in no way, did not do anything but support that.
We did not make them give up, is what you're trying to say. They gave up all on their own. And perhaps they gave up all on their own because they realized that they were going to hit a roadblock further up the line. I believe that's probably, my belief is, that may be what they thought. Because when you get a unanimous vote, you don't pull out and blame the people that voted to go forward.
They worked hard, they did a good job. I think that, I think what happened to us, as often happens to us, is after you read a couple of articles and hear a few people say, "Tom, it looks like we were all the bad guys." So, I don't think we were the bad guys. But I don't know that there were any bad guys, it just didn't work.
Here, I'm sorry.
Let me say something from a Parks standpoint, on the issue that, the two things that we wanted to see completed in our, we did everything in our master plan from nineteen eighty, from nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four. The two things were outdoor family aquatic center, what the community, and the community voted on all this.
Not voted, but the community had an input on all this.
It was citizen-driven, was family outdoor aquatic and indoor recreation facility. That's the two things that have not been completed. And when the Parks Board looked at it and studied it, like, if you'll look back at what they gave you, number one was, we could proceed with the family outdoor aquatic center now. The indoor rec center needs a little bit further study because it is going to take partnerships within the community to do that. And it can be done. It can be done. It just needs a little time, a little further study, and the Parks Board, you know, is willing to go on with other people also, and we've discussed, the city managers discussed, we will be looking into that.
Thank you, and I really want to thank you and your department and your board as well. And I don't want it to look or feel like it's, I'm not, I'm not supporting what you guys want. And I think you've known this since you've met me, the first day I came in. I'm pretty passionate about this, that I actually am someone who will use the facility, who will show up with a lot of other young kids, and I will be that pool that's built. But I don't know if the rest of you guys in this room will be there, but I'll be there with my kids.
I don't have time to play.
And we want to make sure we have a good, solid plan and a good working order.
And we need to work with, with other entities, and maybe they can't work with us, but we don't know until we ask, and we don't know until we explore.
And the last thing we want to do, step on anybody's toes, is already in the business, too. They need to work everybody together for the benefit of...
Right, and if we can all come together and hire a consultant like we're doing with the former...
We will be working on it. It can be done. We will be going forward with it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other open questions? If not, our new business.
So, the deadline, if anything needs to be added to the agenda, is Friday before Monday? Really, technically... Really, technically Thursday, but we got stuff today, so technically it should be Thursday? Technically, it should be noon Tuesday, so that the draft can go out on Wednesday. But I can work with people. Now, I don't have anything to add, I just...
So, anything to be added?
Tuesday noon.
Friday for Tuesday noon. And if something comes up that just has to be dealt with, I'll...
We'll deal with it. Yeah. Are we through?
I don't know if you had, I don't know, I can answer what I can answer, but because of the way...
Oh, emergency management.
Because we don't have, we don't have full-time people, so there's nobody here to...
Mayor, what's one of your areas that's semi...
That's kind of what I'm figuring.
I just don't know about the last year, trying to get back into operational stuff. That's going to be more, they're going to ask, be able to answer, I guess.
Well, I asked to discuss this, and all I'm asking for is a discussion right now. I think that, let me give the introduction, the conclusion, and the beginning, and then throw out a few questions and comments, and then people can just jump in if that's all right with you, Mayor. My intro is, I understand that the, I understand the mayor has the power to appoint the emergency management director. I understand that we have the power of the purse, so we have the power to, to support funding for that or to not have funding for that. I also believe that when we're finished with this discussion, that it might make sense to have a group of people, not taking any priorities away from the mayor, but it might make sense to have a group of people get together and come up with some ideas that we might want to implement in this area. So, that's my intro and my conclusion. But this is just a discussion, I'm not asking, I know we don't vote on these things, but what, what got me going on this was, is obviously I'm looking at it and I see that we spent two hundred and sixty, it looks like we're going to spend two hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and fifty-four cents the last year, plus there's another line that I can't really figure out where that is, and Steve's, as y'all know, Steve's dad has died, and so he's working this out right now, so I didn't want to bother him. And then, so I looked at that, and I looked and saw where the state has a pass-through amount via the county, so it goes through the county, but the county doesn't donate it. The state reimburses some of the salary, up to thirty thousand dollars for emergency management. So, we got twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars from the state. And so, so then I asked Steve, what does the county spend? They pay twenty thousand bucks. So, initially, so I looked at that and realized that this doesn't make any sense. So, then I asked, well, what have they typically been paying in the past? Twenty thousand dollars. So, then I asked, well, what kind of agreement do we have to deal with this? And we don't have one. So, I guess my, after making those quick statements, my first question is, and I think I know this answer, the, what did, I know it's no, but what portion of emergency management, in other words, we built a really nice building over there, did they pay for any portion of the emergency management aspect of that? Okay, that's what I thought. So, the one thing that I would say I'd like for us to be thinking about is to come up with a new plan, where we're not paying, you know, ninety to ninety-seven odd percent of the budget for emergency management, which is a joint, it's city and county. I don't think that makes any sense. What does everybody else think?
Well, it doesn't have to be city and county. It used to be separate, and then Judge Collins asked that we allow our emergency management director to also be jointly appointed. The statute encourages a joint.
It does, that's right.
But, frankly, a little bit different than most counties because being the main provider of emergency management services and having that, most of the assets, I guess, we're a bigger entity, a bigger agency than the county, whereas most places, the cities are usually smaller, unless you get into larger urban areas like, of course, Lexin level emerged governments, and that was, whatever year that was. So, we were already in the point, at that point of building the EOC, well, Public Safety Building, and the EOC on the third floor. But I did talk to the judge and said that there might be some interest from the commission on asking for more financial contribution from the county. And I don't know, and without having Steve here, I don't know the actual amounts that they, that they dealt with.
Well, I'm, I got that right off of Steve's stuff, is twenty thousand is what they bought in equipment last year, out of a budget of two hundred and fifty-nine to more, depending on what that final number is. And then there was a pass-through from the, from the state for twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars.
We should have addressed it while they were here.
Well, I don't think that's probably, probably all right not to. I guess, I guess, so that gets us to interlocal agreement. We had one in two thousand seven that was never signed, and of course, I read that, and the thing that just hit me immediately is, there's no mention in the interlocal agreement about cost. So, you know, I bet you they would have loved to have signed it. And we're fortunate we didn't sign it, would be my guess. But I think one other thing we need to be strongly considering is to create an interlocal agreement that either determine, as a, and I don't, like I said, that obviously the mayor has the greater authority here, but we do have the authority to approve money. So, I think we need to consider having an interlocal agreement or decide to just do it for the city. And you're right, Mayor, but, you know, the county's population now is almost the same as the city's. It's within a thousand or so, maybe, maybe a little more, a little less. So, and then the fact that, you know, the fact that we've got our own building, which we're paying for, and we're not charging depreciation costs on it or anything else, I think fifty-fifty is fair. But, but I don't know, there may be a different magic number besides that. So, that was my thing on budget and on my, on the interlocal agreement. Does anybody know why that never was signed in two thousand seven? You know, I was, Darren Rambo, I don't know, Mayor, he, Darren Rambo contacted me about an interlocal agreement and provided me with the draft, and, you know, I reviewed it, and then, my recollection is that there was no interest in moving forward with it at that time. And I don't recall whether the hesitation was on the city's part or whether the hesitation was on the county's part, but, you know, that was the draft, and... And you got some, I think you got some comments from somebody, I can't remember who it was, or were those your comments? Those were probably my comments. And I don't know whether that was a document that Darren, you know, found as a template from another city.
And besides that, I don't remember that specific issue, but we could probably ask and get answers.
Okay.
I definitely think it's worth looking into, because I didn't notice that we've spent two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in an area, you know, the things I look at are snapshot pictures, so maybe I...
It includes all the salaries, and there's some things that are disrequired that when we have certain responses, we choose not to do, and so we... And some of those costs will be reimbursable after the incident on Morrisell Street, that's going to be reimbursed.
But these, this is the, on twenty-third of October, Steve sent us an email with those, with an Excel spreadsheet that's got those costs on it. I guess the other, another question I had on staffing, I'd like an Attorney General's opinion on the ability, no offense, Mayor, but the ability of the mayor to appoint deputy, and I believe until we get an Attorney General's opinion, that he should step down and all compensation ceased.
I'm definitely going to disagree with that, because I've spoken with... Hmm, I'm definitely gonna disagree with that, because I've spoken with the attorney general's office. It clearly said that the mayor appoints the director, and it's, there's nothing that would appoint, nobody else would appoint that position, and we've already got, if, if, so you're saying that we wouldn't pay the person that's in there now?
I think he should resign until this is clarified, I don't think he should serve.
In fact, I'll tell you what.
Well, what you used in your 39.070, number three, which is what you used in your justification.
I will say this, though, this is the form, the appointment form, that appoints the local emergency management deputy director in some form prescribed by the state.
Right.
Promulgated, um, and it is Kentucky EM Form 15A revised in 2009, so I think that's very clear.
Well, you know...
I have to strongly disagree on that, that...
And, and you very well might be right, but when you read the statute, it doesn't make any, doesn't connect with the one you use, so I don't, that's the only thing I was going by, and I talked to the city attorney, and so, so I, I just don't think that power exists, but like I said, I've been wrong before. Unless you declare an emergency.
If we don't have a deputy director, then right now, we don't have anybody.
Well, I was gonna ask about that in a second.
The statute 39B and 39C are clear as mud, and there's no, you know, there are, I did not see a specific authorization as to who would hire an assistant, whether that would be the joint action of the county judge and you, Mayor May, or whether you and your individual capacity, so it's, it's just hard for me to say one way or the other. And it would be nice to have a formal AG's opinion if the commission wants to do that. It provides clarification, and it certainly, if you all recall, Mayor, it did answer some questions that previously existed several years ago, uh, and AG's opinion was that we got concerning emergency management really helped to answer some questions and provide some guidelines. I would say when you look at 39, chapter 39 as a whole, generally, the mayor does have a substantial amount of power, although the commission has the power of the purse, so those two kind of act as checks and balances.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, if, if, if y'all, if, if we wanna have the, have the fella continue, I understand that. If he doesn't, we're stuck, so if we wanna have him continue and then wait on the opinion, I'm fine with that. There's three people that would support getting an opinion.
An opinion is just an opinion, no, no.
From AG, from, if you get a formal opinion from the attorney general's office, you're bound to follow it, unless...
It's not clear as yet anymore.
It's, it's crystal clear, as I quote, uh, Colonel Jessup.
Well, I think we need to leave somebody in place until we find out that we're, and I think we need to leave the person in place until if and until we find out that it's not.
I'm fine with that.
You know, there is a provision, KRS 39D100, that says the chief executive, uh, or governing body of each political subdivision of the state may enter into a contract or lease with the state or employee personnel. But again, you get the question of where we have a joint entity like we do here.
I'll tell Commissioner, which we met, I was perfectly fine to wait till January and set appointing the second deputy, but after last week, we were stretched, it was difficult. You can't plan for those, and that, it happened two times in the same week.
Well, and I think...
And then ice storm.
I think that gets to some other questions that I have, and I'll get to those in a moment, but is there support to get an AG opinion? I guess that's my first question.
Yes, I have no problem with it.
Okay, alright.
I have no problem with anything to say.
I think we'll probably hear that we're fine, but I want everybody to be comfortable with it.
If, but January comes around and we, and we don't have it, then I would ask that we find that position to back where we were, because we've dealt with one director and two deputies for the last, I'm trying to think how many.
We went for years without them.
The deputies?
Didn't we have just a, how many deputies did you have?
Well, I was, we had a, I had a director, one deputy, and then, then they added the second one, and it's because we don't have a full-time, if we had a full-time position, if we had full-time positions, that would be different. The problem is, because we have three months where people are off, there's a time period where there's only one person.
And that gets you to the crux of the question, is do you need a full-time position, and, and I don't believe that we do. I believe we need to, instead of appointing a, a full, a nine-month person or a full-time person, I think we should appoint somebody that's currently one of our employees, and then, and then that, and that may be a bad idea, but I think that would lower our costs, and then I think they could utilize, you would choose somebody that was a, in a higher level of position, either in fire or police, and then they could utilize police and fire people to do this, rather than, than having to spend all this money and salaries, that I think we could use our own people and do it, and do it a lot cheaper.
The only trouble with that is, is if we're using a assistant fire chief or battalion chief, someone at that level, then they have to step out of their role, and then we're gonna have a staffing problem there.
Well, how did Darren do it?
He was, he was emergency management director before he was with communications.
Right, so how did he do it? He did both.
With communications.
Yeah.
It was hard on him. He started out as emergency preparedness coordinator in the fire department, that's the job he got hired to. And the fire chief asked me to appoint him as, appoint the preparedness coordinator as emergency management director. So those jobs were kind of hand-in-hand, and then last year, was it, or this year? Uh, Chief, do you remember when, when did?
It was after Earl Hensley retired, which was in December of 12.
12.
And we combined the duties...
For the preparedness coordinator.
Communications director and preparedness coordinator.
For the emergency management.
Actually, combined the function of communications and E911.
Right.
And moved from the fire department to the administrative control of the police department.
Okay, um, I guess my, some other questions I have is, this, this whole idea of definition of emergency, I think we have, and it's, and it's a, it's an opinion, but I think we've taken a really broad definition of it, which, which, which then entails us having to have more staff and more time devoted. I think, I think we should have a narrower definition with more focus on planning, administration, restoration, and recovery, instead of first response, and like, for example, we, we're asking Rebecca to be the FEMA applications agent, and I think that's something that they should do, uh, but, I mean, I'm fine if she doesn't, I know she'll do a great job, but I think there's been too much focus on being out in the field and not enough on planning and administration and those kind of things, and once again, I, I think that's a way you could, if you narrow the definition, you could do it at a lower cost.
Well, I know the definition of emergency is actually in the statute.
It is, but we, we broadened it significantly from what's in the statute.
I don't know, the response, I know they went on a lot of responses.
And I looked at all those things, um, you know, I mean, I had memorized them, but I didn't stretch the imagination, but, but I, I think that, that we do a lot of things in emergency management that are also done by the police and the, and fire, and I, and I think that we could coordinate it in such a way, and, and once again, that's why I think that maybe a group could come together and work on this, because I, I could be perfectly wrong. Like I said, what got me going on, it was the month, but, uh, I, I suspect that there's a way to coordinate there better to where we need fewer people and could probably do it just as successfully, if not, and so that's why I think that you could do it with fewer people. You can't the way we're doing it now, probably, but I, but I think that we could do it, and so that was one, that was some questions on emergency. Some miscellaneous questions I have, which y'all may know, is, I don't really understand this local disaster, emergency services organization. Who is that?
Well, we have a local emergency planning commission, which is made up of, and there's a statutory...
Yes, that's exactly right. 39B105, 1, 2, and 3, and 39A.02012, and 39B.010, number 2.
And so they do meet, and that can be outside industry people, too, to talk about planning and disaster needs for the community, um, responses, so there's a, there's a group of that.
Well, we're supposed to be on it, I think.
You can be, and it's open to the, those meetings are open to the public. So I'd say maybe if you go to one of the, if you wanted to attend some of those, that would be a good...
Well, I guess what I, you're right, what I'd like to know is, the, what does that group do? How often do they meet? What their powers are, because reading this, it looks like, obviously, they don't have the same power as, as, as the mayor or the governor or the county judge or the emergency management director, but they do have power. And I'd like a clarification on what those powers are vis-a-vis the mayor and the director.
It should be in the statute, essentially.
It is, I read it, and it's about as clear as the other one, it's clear as mud.
There's sort of an advisory...
Well, I tell you what, read, read those ones I cited, you're exactly right, I think it is mainly advisory, but it doesn't read like that. I think it is mainly advisory, but it doesn't read that way. Some places, it reads advisory, so I'd like, if the city attorney could get us some information on that.
So, on the LAPC, local emergency planning, or you said the other...
I don't, it's, in the, in the statute, it's called local disaster emergency services organization. I assume it's the same, exact same thing you just said.
I'm gonna think about what you're reading. Like a local disaster emergency services organization?
They're supposed to be meeting and giving advice, and it looks like they even have powers. I'll, I'll get to read one of these if you want me to.
Because there's a, there is a local emergency planning committee that has a chair and a secretary, and they keep minutes. Just wanna make sure we're not confusing the two.
There's some of them. It says, "Local disaster emergency services organization shall comprise the following members and participants." Got down who that's supposed to be on there, and it says, "Shall have responsibility for the performance of all disaster and emergency response functions contemplated in KRS 39A.010, blah, blah, blah." I know, I don't know what blah, blah, blah is either.
That is a planning group.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think they're planning. If they are, we don't know about it, unless, but other members do. I don't know anything about it.
Well, they don't have any, the, all the, um, actual authorities are gonna go through the directors and the chief executives to do the plans.
"The local disaster and emergency service organization shall have responsibility for the performance of all disaster and emergency response functions contemplated?"
That's like our division of emergency management, that's what that's supposed to be.
No, it's, so why does it use that? That's why I'm saying it's clear as mud, why does it use that phrase? That's the same organization as this, same language?
That's the same statute that was passed in 98, this hasn't been changed. Actually, in 2010, they did something.
So I'd just like clarification on what that entity is, when it meets, what its powers are, and whether we need to be involved with it.
There are two separate things there, but that, um...
Well, I think you and I've talked a little bit about it, I don't think he knew either.
It, uh, what I'll have to do is, you know, I've reviewed the chapter 39A, B, C, and D several times, but I'll just have to go through and summarize them, and...
We went through some of those before, and the attorney general's opinion came back the way, well, you run that, Kuschner?
Right.
Okay, well...
We'll find out about the deputy director position.
And that this, whatever this organization needs to be doing, if anything.
They're meeting.
Well, when did they meet?
I think the last one was September, October.
Typically, it's quarterly.
Okay, who's on it?
Uh, it's a, it's a wide range of people, from, uh, health department, uh, state partners, um, hospital, um, it's, um...
Couple of industry people, too.
Kind of like that group we were in the other day.
Uh, it's very much like that, in fact, we meet at the health department very often. Last meeting I attended was there, I think they, they've had one since then at the third floor.
Well, they had one at the civic center.
Right, and sometimes they do the tabletop exercises through that group.
See, I think some of this is getting crossed over to something else, so...
Might be.
I'll figure out if it's the LAPC, or you're talking about something...
I'm talking about the LAPC, I'm sorry.
Because that can, yeah, that's why I say, I wish they were here to answer those questions, because I don't know that operational side of what they're doing.
Okay, um, the, I guess they just completed a new plan, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That was updated.
Just updated, I guess, in the last year or so.
This year, yes.
Okay, we're supposed to be doing annual revisions on those plans, and we're not really. Now, I'm told we're gonna start being able to do them now, because we've got a plan that's easier to do it with, is that right?
They changed from annexes to emergency support functions, when I was not, when I left, it was, they had annexes, there was an annex for different response capabilities and, and protocols, and now it's gone to emergency support functions, which is supposed to be easier to work with than all those annexes. That's the plan.
Okay.
And I've not had to work under that new, thank goodness, under that new system yet.
So when do, when, are you, are you, I think you are, but are you supposed to submit, is the emergency management director supposed to submit a budget every March?
Well, it's submitted to the chief executive, you know, whether it's the city mayor or the county judge executive, but then, and it has to still be approved, it still has to go through, the city manager can, can look at that and recommend it into the budget or not, and then the commission gets final, final say on it.
So is that being done in March?
It was this year, and plan on doing it next year.
Okay, so...
I don't know what they did, that was four years when I was out, so I don't, I don't know, because I was involved in it.
So does the county get a, get the submission, too, for the budget?
All I know about is what we, what we're doing from the city standpoint.
Yeah, they're supposed to get one, too, but I, I can see why you wouldn't give them one.
Yeah, I mean, that wouldn't be something that I would, would be involved with, that would be the director giving that to the county judge.
Okay, what kind of reports do they submit to the mayor and the county judge?
Uh, most of them are either verbal, or on occasion, they'll submit like, an email report or a written report, and that's a lot of the stuff we were sending to you guys last week.
Got it.
I was making sure, because that was, it was different, we really hadn't had anything till last, had a hit last...
Mm-hmm, got a power outage that first term, and then, like, the first day we're in the office last term, and then we haven't really had anything.
We've been lucky, a bunch of near misses, but that's, I've, sort of, I like reports, and I like to push those out to you
Appreciate it.
Because I know you're, you're gonna get questions, and there's a lot of rumors that take place that gets to be of a concern, too.
Well, I think, I think they're supposed to get you a program activity report, and it's supposed to go to the mayor and the county judge. I'm not, I'm not looking, no, I think that's for each time, each time that they do something.
Oh, you're not talking, you're talking about each, like, an after-action report?
I think there's a program activity report that's supposed to be done.
Well, I like, I just call them after-action reports, like a complete detail, that's why I said we're hoping to get information from the plant board, so we can sort of share that.
I think it's for each time they go out or something, anyway, I'd leave that to you, but they, when I talked to them over there, they didn't seem to think they were really doing that, but all this other stuff looked to me to be pretty thorough as far as all the times they went out and those kind of things.
We were, beforehand, I would ask them for after-action reports, and sometimes we do an after-action with, if it was a big event, like I said, in the fire department, do we still, I mean, I haven't had to do any of those through emergency management. Did you still do those in the fire department, where you do an after...
The after-action reviews that we've done in the past several years, it's only involved the fire department. Wouldn't we do those after each major event?
But that's, I like those detailed reports, Commissioner.
Well, so I guess, I don't really have any other questions, I just would like to see... Just would like to see us run this cheaper, have the county pay their fair share, have an inter-local agreement, and have it done differently as far as staffing, et cetera. I realize all those are opinions, but I don't think any, I think all of us are on the same pages, believing that we don't need to be paying 85 or 90% of the cost of the program if it's benefiting the whole community. So I guess what my question, my last question would be, what, how do we proceed from this? I know you can't vote in this.
Get a dollar amount or a percentage. That's the thing, I wish they were here to tell us which response, what percentage of those responses were inside the city limits.
Maybe that's just some direction we can give, to give us some information.
Because I don't think that, that financial report didn't have.
Look back on the last five years or so, let's see what's going on.
Yeah, but then, you know, and I agree with that. I think though, the one cost, though, I mean, we're paying all the, we're paying all the, well, we're paying all the building costs.
The building.
We're throwing that in for free.
And we asked them when we were building it if they could contribute. They didn't have the funding back then.
Oh, well, I don't blame them.
We knew that that was going to be a difficult one.
We might not have either, but you're right, I don't blame them. So if we could, if we could have staff look, analyze that and see if there's a, if we could come up with a more equitable way to come, to deal with that, and then I guess I would, if all of you guys could sort of think about this idea of how to define emergency and how to, inter-local agreement and things like that, maybe we could talk about it at the, I don't know, what, the next work session? We could maybe have the information on the, hats, brace.
Joint meeting coming up with the county in February? Am I making that up in my head? I don't know why I was thinking we were going to have a joint meeting coming up like February or something.
Not on my radar, it's weird.
You might have dreamt about that.
To me, it's pretty well defined in the statute on what, what is contemplated, like in terms of the scenarios or emergencies. And like, for example, the last week, the overwhelming part was staffing issues and scene safety, and there was not enough. And I don't like getting specifics on it in a public meeting, simply because I don't want people to know our response capabilities or how we do things, but there were some, it was very good that the emergency management folks were on the street there to coordinate getting some things, because sometimes our folks just don't know how to do it.
Well, but there's also a wide variety of opinions on this topic, that emergency management is not needed the way that we're utilizing it. Is not needed for first response. Is not needed every time there's a missing person, we send an emergency management person out at the same time we send police out. So I think there's a variety of, and like I said, I don't, I don't think it's either-or, that what I think is right, I've not been here long enough to know enough about emergency management, but I also don't think, there's a lot of people that will tell you that we are too broadly defining that, but most of them are afraid to talk about it. But I'm telling you that there's a wide variety of opinion on that issue. So all I'm asking is, is that I think we need to look at this closely, because if we're not, this might be a way, I'm not saying it's against the statute, but the statute doesn't say that you go out on every time there's a missing person. It just doesn't. The statute's broad. It has specifics like tornado and those kind of things, but many of the things we're sending them out for first response on are not covered under the statute. They could, and you could assume that, but we don't have to do it.
I think they're under the search and rescue missions, under the rescue squad section.
Doesn't say you have to go out when there's a missing person.
We weren't, that was, that's something that started the last four years, because when I left.
But that's the majority, that's almost one of the majority, big things that they do, is going out for a missing person.
I do know when I asked about that question, our former director mentioned that they found a fella. So they told me that.
Yes, sorry.
Maybe you told me that.
No, I don't know, but, and that's enough, but I do think that's something I want to bring up at the next work session, where we see if we can get an A.G. opinion by then and get some percentages.
I think they changed, the protocols are.
He got this.
And A.G. opinion takes at least three to six months.
Oh, gosh, well, we might ask.
But I think some of the points that Commissioner Roke's making, especially the financial contribution to the county, I think that's something that can be done, just looking at.
And the equipment, they just can't.
About what has happened, like in the last five years, because there's a lot of training that goes on, so anybody just can't do this, do that job. So that puts it in an area, because as you're talking, if I look at the first responses and recovery, and those are, can be totally different things, different training. You have training for one thing, but not for another thing. But I think it is worth looking into, because I did not look at, think the budget close enough to see the $265,000. I saw numbers on a snapshot, so I'm not sure how that money was spent, unless I might would have had some of the, some of the questions. Commissioner Roke should look at more detail now, so I wouldn't have had that many questions, but I'd have had some. So just the inter-local agreement, you know, that's something that's working toward, because that kind of fixes it, not just for now, but for future commissions, you know, just kind of puts it in, you know, a nicer apron to look at, because evidently, we have not looked at, some of these, I've not looked at any of those. But I'm aware of some of the other emergency responses, only because of some other positions I've been in, you know, like the Blue National Guard, their E.O.C. And I'm aware of that one. I'm aware of ours downtown, only because of going through the police academy, you know, course of seeing, you know, who's where, who the players are. But some of these local groups, I'd have to say, I'm not familiar. I'm not sure I need to be, because I don't want to go to any more meetings. But it's okay for me to be aware of them, you know, especially if we're making decisions that's going to help Frankfurt, and in essence, help Franklin County. So I do think some of the points taken, we definitely need to, you know, take a pause and, you know, just kind of send somebody down that way to say, okay, are there some things we can do better? Some things that we can include, we're always talking about doing partnerships and inter-agreement kind of things. This is the kind of thing that would be important, because emergencies don't happen every day, but, you know, when they do happen, you've got to be ready.
I think I'm remembering, the reason we might not have done it in the local agreement, because it may not be needed because of the way the statute is doing it.
They suggest you have one, but they don't mandate it.
Right.
They're strong, they use pretty strong language to suggest it.
That might be part of it, because a lot of that's implied in 39A and B where, when you have the joint. And of course, we don't have to do the joint.
Yeah, but my guess is, if we didn't do the joint, we'd spend just as much money.
Yeah.
I don't think we should, but I think we would.
I think I would remind everybody, too, like, when you look at departments, it's a small percentage that's counting three people. They don't, we don't pay benefits for any, well, we don't pay benefits on any of them, I don't think.
Not at the moment, but actually, our costs may increase if we have three people.
We had, we had three for the last.
Because, yeah, because Darren was also doing another job. We're actually coming out better than that sounds. When you have, when you have his salary pulled out on this budget thing, we, anyway, if you have three that are outside, that you don't have anybody that's a current employee, you'll actually look, it's going, it may end up being worse overall. So.
Well, I know on their behalf, they, when I talk to them about, can they do this job with just two people, it obviously makes it more difficult when we're short personnel. And then at one point, I forgot how many months it is to them a year, and it's only going to be one person there.
You got somebody, you got one guy on nine months, and I don't know what Jeff's on, how many months he worked.
Same deal.
Yeah, so, well. So Rob, they'll take three to six months on the A.G. thing, right?
That's correct. So just, so I have a clear idea of what I'm supposed to be doing. It's in my understanding that the commission wants me to review these chapters and kind of summarize the critical sections of the statute and the duties. In the course of doing that, of course, I will contact the A.G.'s office and whoever else deals with this, just to make sure that I'm not misinterpreting them, but then also come back with a proposed request for an A.G.'s opinion on some specific items, and I could, I could come back to you all in the first work session in January, if you want me to, if that's soon enough, or I could do it in February, depending on what you all want, or I could come back in February, depending on when you all want me to come back.
I think if you do that first part and come back with it, that would give us a better opinion on whether we need to wait, you know, go forward for.
With the request?
Right. Because we might have a clear question, you know, no need to send us off and then say, that's not what we really meant. What we really wanted was this question, where if you do that research that you're speaking of, it would clarify for me.
So could you get that to us in January? Is that good?
I think my, thinking on, we've already, we all reviewed the other attorney general opinion. We looked at this before with the commission, and it came back everything we told them. The attorney general said, yeah, you're right.
And I'll have that attached.
It's the same.
So we won't have to make a decision until we've looked at what you've come up with?
That's pretty much all you've done.
Great.
All right. All on the same page.
And it's pretty clear cut.
I don't think I've got direction.
I think it's clear cut, because if you look at 39A, O-10, it says the legislative intent. They specify like.
I wouldn't be surprised if you're right. I just don't think it's clear.
No, I mean, that's, if you go back and read that section, then.
I have. I read it all.
Probably more clear, because that's one of the few chapters where they actually put.
So.
39A.
Oh, that's the one, 39A, B, C.
O-10 and O-20, where it talks about, it actually says the legislative intent necessary is referred upon the governor, the county judges of the counties, the managers of the cities, and et cetera, the emergency powers through 39A through F, and then it just finds, like, emergency and the contemplated actions, it said, or, pretty much, I forgot the exact wording, or the block.
You're on it. That's right. So then y'all will find the percentages, and then at that work session, we could maybe revisit a couple of these, and see what people think?
And you want the more connection on missing persons or search.
Actually, I'm, I'm big on, I believe this whole topic of emergency and how you define it, I know it's defined by the statute, but how you implement it, and whether you have a broader definition or not.
That's such an issue, that, actually, in the different section.
But remember, we've got a fire department and a police department. They do a lot of stuff. They can do a lot of these things. You don't have to send, I don't believe you have to send emergency management personnel out every time there's one of these things, and I don't believe the statute requires it either.
But that's when, that's what the emergency management is, to coordinate the agencies.
They are to coordinate, but they don't have to be first responders.
I don't think that they, I don't know that they do.
Also, the state emergency management.
I think they spend a lot of time on that, but anyway, we can, that's enough of this, or from my perspective.
Amen.
Thank you.
Are your dad with they moving right along?
It says a lot of things.
But I would like, if you might have got specific examples they don't want to bring up at the meeting, you would like to share those with me, we'd be happy to talk to our folks if there's concerns about the way that people respond, as if you say first responders versus.
So Rob will bring it back to us at the January work session.
Right. The one thing, I would hope that if our folks come back, our director and deputy director, and even, I guess we can consult with our former director, too, it's like the manpower needs, if that is an issue, I would hope that we would come to some kind of agreement to get a second person, because we're just, we're short one person out from what we've been the last.
Hopefully, they'll be a part of the conversation when we have that.
And when our director comes back.
Three months, he will be here.
Maybe he can show up.
You know, and I think that's something that needs to be discussed, is manpower and how to, how to do it.
It's a problem. Our campaign, it was very iffy the other day, for everybody, police, I think we had a captain in an intersection directing traffic that tied up all the supervisors for a bit, too.
Sometimes it's all hands on deck.
That's what I'm saying.
That's part of, that's part of emergency job.
Direct traffic.
Yeah, that wouldn't help, it'd help any.
No, my point being, there's a captain can't get, we're like, what do you, they couldn't say what, I think that Maggie was asking, like, what do you need? I think the response I heard back was, I don't know, I'm stuck in an intersection.
I think it goes back to definition, anyway.
I think this thing is.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Move by Commissioner Roke, second by Commissioner Valerius.
Everybody.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, say a aye. Those who have black signs, adjourn.
Thank you.